Okay. We'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council, and I believe we have something to report out, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, the City Council authorized the city attorney to defend the lawsuit filed by Mistress David Seto referencing item 3A of the closed session agenda.
Okay, with that, no further business was conducted per the city attorney. We'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, June 26th. The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, Miklos, and Morin is absent.
Okay, if you'd all rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming down and keeping us company. I'm going to take a mayor's personal privilege, as we've done in some other things. I'm actually going to convene this meeting in the name of Pastor Allison Watkins. Allison was a pastor that came to Folsom under some very trying circumstances when we had a local pastor decide to do some things that really I was surprised the pastor would do and cause a lot of damage to one of our local churches. She came out and took this church under her wing with a lot of the guidance in the local area and turned a very devastating event into one of our long, long, long time churches, been here for well over thirty-five, probably forty-five years at least, and has made it very successful again. Unfortunately, Pastor Allison's in-laws or health is failing, so she announced that she had to leave and actually go back to North Carolina with her husband and take care of him. So I want to thank on behalf of the community of Folsom, somebody of her caliber, her caring and her compassion, to take the time away and drive and come across three thousand miles to the city of Folsom, not knowing anything about the city of Folsom, and just put in her heart and soul and everything she had into the city and this community. She's very active, so we want to convene the meeting in her name and certainly wish her the best of luck and certainly the best of wishes for her in-laws to hopefully have a few more years remaining in their life and be very pain-free, so to speak. So with that, we'll move on to the next item. Clerk?
Your next item this evening is Agenda Update. You have two items have been provided with additional information. That is item 8A and item 9A. Additional information has been provided to your council and is available at the back table for members of the public.
Okay. And with that, go ahead and call the first item.
Business from the Floor will be your first item this evening. You have five requests to speak.
Okay, Business from the Floor is for any member wishing, any person, excuse me, wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda. You have the three-minute time limit. If we look like a bunch of deer in headlights up here, it's because it's a non-agendized item. We are not allowed by law to be able to communicate back to you our opinion and so on and so forth. All we can do is ask questions and give direction to the senior staff. So with that, clerk, please call the Business from the Floor.
Your first speaker tonight is Harris Blickstein, who will be followed by Mike Barnbaum.
Good evening. Thank you for coming down.
Hi. This is where I'm supposed to stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Harris Blickstein. I live at forty-eight Cedar Circle in the Folsom Manor Mobile Home Park, located on the north side of Inwood. Ours is an age-restricted senior citizen park with fifty-nine units. All are owner-occupied. The park pays property taxes in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Because of the narrow streets in the park, the fire department will not allow vehicles to be parked overnight in front of our homes. Most of the homes have room to park two vehicles. Many of the residents store vehicles on their premises, classic cars, trucks, motorcycles, and trailers. For those lucky enough to still have a living partner, most have two daily driver cars. We used to park our extra vehicle on the park's frontage along Inwood. In late April, the city installed signs restricting parking to two hours along our front, extending eastward almost to Hollyand Drive. The same restrictions were placed on the south side of the street. With no days or hours posted, one must assume that this is enforceable twenty-four hours a day. This was confirmed during a phone conversation I had with Mark Rackavan on June twelfth. I have written to the mayor twice. I've also had phone conversations with Pete Picardo on May fifteenth, May twenty-second, June thirteenth, and this morning. In Mark's letter to me dated March thirty-first, he stated, begin quote, "The time limit parking was installed in response to complaints from nearby residents about vehicles being parked extended periods of time along Inwood Road in excess of the city's seventy-two-hour vehicle ordinance," end quote. Warnings were issued. I got one. However, nobody in the park can recall receiving a citation for storing a vehicle, so I guess the warnings worked. Just like the residents of single-family homes all over the city, we parked our cars on the city streets in front of our home. We certainly never stored them. As seniors living in a mobile home park, we feel like we're being discriminated against. The city needs to immediately remove the two-hour parking restriction. It's the right thing to do. I've got a petition signed by thirty signatures of residents asking me to do so. And one additional immediate issue, we have an RV that we use three to four times a year. It's stored elsewhere. We have a trip planned beginning this Sunday, so Thursday we will bring it home to get ready. In the past, we'd bring it home three days before our trip, park it on Inwood at night, and in front of our home during the day to pack. On the third day, we're gone, and it's perfectly legal per the city code. I now have no place to park overnight other than in front of or on the side of a stranger's house located over a half a mile from our home. This morning, Pete told me that he doesn't have the authorization to allow me to park on Inwood, but I should be okay, although if I get a ticket, there's nothing he could do. The Folsom Municipal Code, Section ten dot twenty dot two eighty, Paragraph C, states that four times a year, I can ask for a seventy-two-hour extension to park an RV on the street. I need a permit for the first seventy-two hours.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah. Somebody tell me who to talk to or what I need to do, so I don't break the law.
So how about I have Pete Picardo and Mark Rackavan get ahold of you and see if we can work something out for you?
Okay. I appreciate it, Your Honor.
Because I think the RV request is extremely reasonable, to say the least. Can't comment on the others because I'm not familiar, as I shared with you.
Okay.
That's why I directed you to Mark Rackavan, because of all the studies and whatnot. So but yeah, definitely get ahold of Pete and Mark.
You'll have them call me, or they both have my number?
Yeah, I'll have them get ahold of you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
It will happen sooner or later, so that way you can go on vacation, have a good time. If you want to leave the petition, you can leave with the Assistant City Manager, if you wish.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Your next speaker is Mike Barnbaum, and Mike will be followed by Joe Marceau.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the Folsom City Council, staff and audience. Mike Barnbaum, and I head the grassroots organization Ride Downtown 916. First of all, I want to congratulate the city of Folsom and our entire region on coming together. Thanks to Ecos and Caltrans, there is finally night service on the Gold Line all the way to historic Folsom. If you haven't been able to catch up with the news, especially for the audience, just a reminder that from Sacramento Valley Station to historic Folsom, the last train Monday through Saturday is at ten nineteen PM, eight nineteen PM, Sunday and holidays. The last westbound train is at eleven-thirty at night from historic Folsom back to Sacramento Monday through Saturday, and Sunday and holidays, it is at nine-thirty in the evening. But the other rewards will also come with challenges. The rewards of construction to double-track, new light rail vehicles, and eventually going from thirty-minute service to fifteen-minute service will be coming between now and the end of 2021. But those, as I said, come with challenges. Folsom, if you've seen in local media outlet reports, is going to be growing by at least another eleven thousand housing units, if not more. And the challenges of that come a lot with other infrastructure that have to come with housing. But one of those biggest challenges is, how do we work together, fund and grow the Folsom Stage Line service to the growing areas of Folsom, so that people have convenient and frequent service, whether it's within their community or service that feeds the three stations here within the city of Folsom, historic Folsom, Iron Point, and the newly renamed Glen Robert G. Holderness Station. Robert is in the audience tonight and will be recognized before the RT Board of Directors at five-thirty PM on July twenty-third. So we would like to work together and grow the Folsom Stage Line service, but we know that that's going to be a challenge ahead. And one of those aspects is working through the
Mike, can you wrap it up?
Secog Unmet Transit Needs Process as the years hastily approach us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will make sure that when you speak about our eleven thousand houses, that you make it clear that's the next thirty to thirty-five years, because the misnomer in the paper didn't print it accurately, number one. And number two, you know from all your time at SDA and Secog and RT, and I appreciate your very hard work. I've known you for twenty-something years.
Thank you.
And you've done great work, and I know you always will. But the key is, there are challenges. And so what I'd like you to do is go ahead and go on the city's website, and you'll see some of the routes and some of the things that we have planned out. If you want, send me a note and give me some ideas and suggestions, because we're like you. You know, we know that double-tracking is a minimum four years, if not more, down the line, because there's so much involved with that. And we also know that there's a potential light rail spur that we could bring down to south of fifty, but that's not our decision, that's RT. So keep up the good work and maybe kind of energize that in your plans as you're looking.
Yeah, and that's a good point. Networking with the RT Board and the RT administration on that is going to be a key thing going forward, too.
How many years it took us to get night service?
My God.
And the community's wanted it for how long? And of course, you brought it up, what, two, three years ago when we first started talking about the downtown arena. We finally got there.
Yeah, exactly. We finally got it. And the Summer Classic is next week, so if you're going to Golden One Center, you've got regular night service in the schedule, wala, right now.
Yep. So good work. Keep it up.
Thanks for coming out, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Always.
Honored and a pleasure to be here.
Yeah, happy to work with you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Excuse me a minute.
Okay, your next speaker is Joe Marceau. Joe will be followed by Josh Pino.
How you doing?
Good evening.
I live on Bayline Circle in Antoma Station, and I'm the original owner on one-seventy-eight Bayline Circle. And it's been a great place to live. And for about the first twelve years, we'd have a seasonal stream running on the curb in front of my house, and that was fine with me. And then D.R. Horton came in and started building condos off of Willard Boulevard behind Safeway, and that seasonal stream became year-round. And now we have Crestley Homes building, I believe it's forty-seven homes on the hill behind me. They were aware of the problem, and they said they would divert ninety percent of this water over to Willard. Well, it's even a larger stream today, so they haven't diverted any of the water. And so we have a real problem. Josh Pino is going to follow me up. He's got the suggestions to make on this, but this is a dangerous stream. There's lots of algae there. People are going to slip. Already, some of the concrete is cracking, but it's only been now approximately twelve to thirteen years. So I just want to make you aware of that, and it's really all I've got to say.
Well, we appreciate it, and our Public Works Director's taking some notes, and I'm anxious to hear the next gentleman, so we'd like to hear his say. Because number one, if Crestley is still building, and they're not, and they're discharging off their property, that's against their plans. So we'll look into that.
Is it discharged to the front, to the sides, or to the rear? Is there...
They have, they actually have an infrastructure plan, and it has to do with drains and all that kind of stuff. And I know Dave Nugent would have all those plans, and so they can't discharge into somebody else's property and somebody else's yards and so on and so forth.
It's happening.
It's in their plans, so.
Okay.
He's making some notes, and then we'll hear what this gentleman has to say and see if we can figure it out for you. That's not supposed to be happening. I wish I'd known about it before when D.R. Horton came in, because we could have stopped that right off the get-go, too.
I, quickly, I had talked to Horton, and they said they built a big concrete reservoir underneath their area, and all the water would go there. And I said, how much would it hold? And he said, twelve thousand gallons. I said, where is it going to empty into, oh, into the sewers?
Okay, well, we've got some notes going, so go ahead and call the next speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Josh Pino. Josh will be followed by Sharon Kendall.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for allowing me to speak before you.
Sure.
A little disclaimer, since I'm a fellow municipal employee, and so is my son, who's a firefighter, I don't want to, this to be seen as disrespect towards your fellow city employees, a lot of whom are friends of mine. But anyway, this issue, I passed out a picture to you. As Joe explained, it's been going on for a long time. It emanates from the neighboring property next to our house, and it runs twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. Mr. Nugent was kind enough to meet with me out at the site, and as he said, this is one of the most, if not the most prolific one in the city. There is a natural spring that is behind my neighbor's house. It has grown through the years. The city recognized this issue a few years back, so they put some through-the-curb face drains, but it runs continuously. It's to the point now where it's wearing out the concrete on the gutter. As you can see, because of the slow flow, algae creates on there. My wife has already fallen once and because of the slippery surface. It is a mess, to say the least. It's a health and safety issue. I have to blow it. I blow the entire section there with my blower and try to disperse it and get it to go. Mr. Nugent was nice enough to come up with a design that would be what's called a saddle tap, which would be actually tapping into the existing storm route in the street and putting an actual pipe over to a twelve-inch pipe with a culvert, DI, as it's well-known in the industry, and catching that water and taking it into the system. And that would eliminate this issue. The system that he's designing, the estimate he's come up with, is around nineteen thousand, twenty thousand bucks. So I'm here primarily to ask you to help him implement his plan, which is basically fund it. Twenty thousand dollars in the overall scheme of things to solve a long-time issue like this is nothing for the city of Folsom. So I would ask you, Mr. City Manager and the council, to just, like I said, twenty thousand bucks, it's not that much. He's got the plan. He knows what to do. It's just a matter of implementing it and solving a long-time issue for our neighborhood that's putting up with a nuisance, as you can see.
Yeah, it is a nuisance, I can tell. So Dave, when you're ready for your staff report, you and the manager get together and then bring it in front of us, so, because if you have a plan that sounds like something we can budget for, then be sure you get on the first available agenda that works out, and you're tying in with the manager.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thanks for the photo, because I'm aware of that, because we've always talked about that natural spring. On the one hand, it's kind of cool. On the other hand, it can be, like you showed, a nuisance.
Unfortunately, we can't make any use of the water, but, and you know, it's, yeah, you know, if you really look at it from a legalistic standpoint, it probably violates the city NPDES permit to, you know, for discharge. It's a mess, and we can, it's easily solved. Like I said, he came out, he knew exactly what to do. He has a plan. It's just a matter of...
Just a matter of getting it up to...
In the funds, yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I think Sharon Kendall actually wants to speak under consent.
Okay, just announce it again to make sure we double-check.
Yeah. Sharon Kendall, I believe you wanted to speak under an item that actually is on consent calendar. Okay, my mistake for calling you under Business from the Floor. I'll put it back, and we'll call you at consent.
Okay. So are there any other Business from the Floor?
Yes. And the last speaker under Business from the Floor is Rick Braybrick.
Good evening.
Yeah, I want to address the fact that there's been a misuse of card reading, you know, where they swipe your license. I don't get my license swiped walking into anything. It's my right, if it's a public place to go there, I don't need to disclose my name, where I live, and all the other information that's encoded on the back of the license. And I did some research and found out that the bars that are doing this are primarily claiming that they're looking for false licenses or people that are lying about their age. Well, that's not true, because they're doing it indiscriminately and using their card reader on everybody that comes through their door. This is not appropriate use of the law. The main thing they are supposed to be doing is preventing someone who's underage going to a bar. That's it. And collecting any other information is, to me, a very bad thing, because how do I know what they're going to do with it? So what I'm saying is is that it's not their right to have this information. They should only be able to use a card reader when there's high suspicion that something is wrong. And if a person decides they still don't want their card read, they can ask them to leave, and that'd be fine. But they shouldn't be reading these cards, because it could be put on a list and sold as information as to the habits of certain people, and it could be very detrimental to people, because people would assume that if you're going to a bar, you're a drunk or something like that. There's all kinds of side ideas that come off of that. In my case, I'm an entertainer, so I don't really, I have no interest in being a drunk. But my point is that if I go there to check something out, I don't want anybody to know that, and my name and my address, and it's inappropriate. And the law is specific about why or what they have to do as far as who comes in. So what I'd like to do is ask the council to send out a memo to all the bars in town, that you don't have the right to just indiscriminately scan people.
Okay. Our police department is standing in the back room, so I think they're taking notes of what you just said, but I'll also make sure a note gets passed to the PD. You bring us some very good points, and, you know, if that's going on, then obviously they need to know about it, and I'm certainly confident they will deal with it.
Yeah, because the big thing is this information could be sold for money, and it could be very compromising to your career or other things.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with you. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it from Business from the Floor, so go ahead and call the next item.
Your next item this evening is scheduled presentation item 6A. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming June thirty, July first, and July three as Western Rodeo Days in the city of Folsom.
(inaudible). Don't want to keep a lawyer in the back of the room. Designated photographer may stay in the back. Okay, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming June thirtieth, July first, and July second, 2018, as Western Rodeo Days in the city of Folsom. Whereas the city of Folsom proudly recognizes Folsom's western heritage and acknowledges the benefits of preserving the traditions and customs of the city's history, and whereas the annual Folsom Pro Rodeo is a cornerstone of Folsom's link to its colorful past and is thoroughly enjoyed by residents and visitors alike, and whereas this year's event, which is held on June thirtieth, July first, and July third, at the Dan Russell Arena, marks the fifty-eighth anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and whereas Rodeo Park has been renamed for the Folsom Pro Rodeo ambassadors Jim Digger and Sharon Williams, in honor of their long service to our community in the Folsom Pro Rodeo, whereas the fifty-eighth anniversary highlights include all the traditional events, such as saddle and bareback front riding, steel wrestling, team roping, bell racing, and bull riding, formed by the Painted Ladies Grill Team, Flying Cowboys, professional bull jumper, rodeo clowns, nightly fireworks, crowd-pleasing mutton busting, and live music in Mike's Golden Spike Saloon. And whereas in honor of the traditional patriotic theme, the Folsom Pro Rodeo will celebrate with the ever-popular in-arena fireworks. And whereas celebrating the fifty-eighth, eighth anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo involves the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and a tremendous amount of community support that is most appreciated, now here for Alex Curry Howell on behalf of Steve Miklos, mayor of the city of Folsom, be hereby proclaiming June thirtieth, July first, and July third as Folsom Rodeo Days in Folsom, and call upon all citizens to cowboy up and join in festivities celebrating the fifty-eighth anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo. Be it further proclaimed that on behalf of the Folsom City Council, I extend a sincere best wishes to the Chamber of Commerce for another successful rodeo season.
(applause).
Where are you keeping them all?
So I'd like to take a moment and just say thank you to all of our partners in the city of Folsom. We're very proud of the fifty-eight-year legacy of the Folsom Pro Rodeo. We're especially proud of the opportunity to be recognized as the number-one family entertainment event of the summer. It has a huge opportunity to make a memory with a family. The fireworks show is spectacular. We work very hard on all the elements of the rodeo to make it a great evening of entertainment. And of course, it's a huge economic engine for the city of Folsom. And so we love the opportunity to be partnered in bringing this event here, and we look forward to having all of you come out and join us. It's going to be a great rodeo. (applause). Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again, Chamber of Commerce, and I agree with you. I hope it's a very successful rodeo. It has been years after years after years. Hi, Sharon. Were you shy? You couldn't come down tonight? Sharon Williams, the rodeo arena's named after her and her husband, so it was nice to see you here this evening.
(applause).
While Sharon's around, the rodeo, again, will be very good, because otherwise you'll kick somebody's tail, and we ain't talking to cows. I know you.
No, and the clerk said when we got here tonight that the night that we do this proclamation always scares us, because she's afraid that that dotty and that horse are going to come back in the council chambers.
That was unique. Okay, call the next item, please.
Next item is your consent calendar. And you have one request from Sharon Kendall to poll item seven H.
H?
Yeah, I'm asking to have it polled.
Any other items to be polled, please? G, okay.
I'll move A through E. F, rather, sorry.
Here's most for A through F. I'll second. Call roll on those items, please.
Councilmember Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Miklos.
Yes, and resolution, or, excuse me, call of what seven G is.
So seven G is Resolution Number one zero one four five, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a subdivision improvement agreement and accept offers of dedication for the Mangini Ranch Phase One Village Number Two subdivision and approval of the final map for the Mangini Ranch Phase One Village Number Two subdivision.
Roger, that was your answer.
Okay. I got a legal question that's been posed to me by members of the community over some of these subdivision map things. I understand through the Subdivision Map Act, this is more of a ministerial thing, and then if there's a dissenting or abstention, a reason has to be given by the member. If I'm wrong, then I'm fine with that. I just need a legal opinion, because I've been asked to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes and no. So...
That's a great answer.
You're absolutely right. The approvals of final maps are ministerial in nature. But the council members can vote no, should there be reasons to bring up such as non-compliance with conditions of approval in the tentative map that was approved by the city council. And those can be legitimate reasons to vote no on. But typically, if all of the conditions are complied with as required by the city council and the developer has done all that's been required of him or her to do, then the approval of the final map is ministerial.
Okay, so to that point, because obviously I want to potentially cover a colleague of mine, if there is a no vote, that colleague has to disclose the reasons for that vote. If the staff is saying they've met all their approvals per the tentative map, which we approved, and that tentative map makes them do all the other stuff, and as I read this item, they've met all those requirements, I need to know what the legal remedy is for the city council if we do a wrong action or any of my colleagues and I do a wrong action on a vote.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't know each individual council member's vote right now.
Exactly.
And should that council member or a council member or more than one council member decides to vote no, then we would be inquiring as to what condition of approval might not be satisfied, justifying the no vote, but it may not happen, so we'll have to see.
Do they need to put that on the record as far as the justification for the no vote?
They should. Absolutely.
What about with an abstention?
An abstention vote is not a no vote. It is not taking a position.
And I don't need a reason, correct?
It's not a yes vote either. It's not, it does not count towards approving or disapproving something.
Okay, so no reasons have to be given on abstentions.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not getting anybody in trouble.
Well, I have read all of the conditions and all of... I have read all of the conditions, and all of the conditions have actually been met that need to be met at this point in time, so, and I think this came up at the last council meeting, so having said that, I will move resolution 10145.
Okay, got a motion.
I'll second it.
Second by the vice mayor. Call roll, please. Oh, sorry, Roger, you pulled aside. Did you have any comments? Okay, go ahead and call roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Going abstaining.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, call the next item. I believe it's new business.
You have one more consent item.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, we did pull item. Go ahead and call item H.
Okay. Next is item 7H. This is resolution number 10146, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one to the agreement with Blue Tent Farms LLC DBA Western Grazers for weed abatement services.
Ernie, you also asked as well, so privileged to the vice mayor to open the item.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Sharon to come up. At the bit, when I looked at this thing, I forgot, I can only remember so far back. But when the discussion came up this afternoon to pull this item, I recall that when I grew up, we had two goats in our backyard, and I never realized what goats could do when they got started eating. But when it was brought to my attention today, I can see where the risk can be very bad if they're not controlled. So that's why I'm pulling it, and that's Sharon to give us some input.
City council members, audience, Folsom citizens here and at home. My name is Sharon Kendall, and I live at 118 Canyon Rim Drive. If anyone would have told me that I was going to be speaking to you on goats today, I would have been most surprised. However, I'm here to express my concern about goat weed abatement in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area with its unique variety of native plants in a small area. I would like the best for the Hinkle Creek Nature Area as it is a treasure of nature distinctiveness and deserves the highest standard of protection. As I live adjacent to the park, I am concerned about fire control measures. Last year, I myself called about renting a goat to clear the steep hillside, but I found out that a date with a goat costs $5,000. That's their minimum charge. So today, I spoke to Mike Kennedy, owner of Systems Land Management, who has 7,000 goat employees, and I would like to share with you the information that he shared with me. First of all, he told me categorically that goats do not eat tin. The myth came from a TV show called Spanky and our Gang. If you're as old as I am, you remember this show.
Oh, God, I have to admit that?
The goats do eat the paper off of the tin cans. Yes, tin cans used to have paper wrappers for the younger members of the audience.
And they actually used to be tin. They're aluminum now.
Yes. This is true. Second, goat employees are not starved before they go to work and eat almost anything and everything. They are kept in the best of health. Their fast metabolism allows them to eat large quantities and quickly. So Mr. Kennedy contracts with large cities, and he told me that the native or protective plants and oak trees can be protected by using plastic bags or tarps. And that's the reason why I brought up about the tin cans, because when he told me that, I said, "Well, how can that be if they're eating like tin cans?" But he told me, "No." So the nature-sensitive plants are identified by knowledgeable staff members to direct his goat herders to place electric fences and manage the weed abatement. So I am asking if these precautions will be used in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area and if they, if the Hinkle Creek Nature Area was surveyed to determine the location of such plants, making Hinkle Creek unique, and to provide proper fire control. And also, I would like the residents to be notified prior to the arrival of the goats to make sure that we can make arrangements for our pets. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm sure you, at least those pictures aren't from Folsom, and we want to not let that happen.
Those are from the internet. I saw those a year and a half ago. Special breed of goat.
Yeah, you bring up a very, very, very fine point because remember about a year ago, we had a discussion about the sewer lines and protecting Hinkle Creek and what we got to do to fix the sewer lines and also protect that. So I think the individuals in the room on the staff perspective side have gotten that message loud and clear that that is a different area than some of just the actual fire control areas. So we will look into that and see how we can protect it and make sure our objective is met, but at the same time, protect the area we just got done protecting a year ago again. So, my pleasure.
And for those that don't realize this, the goats have been used in numerous locations throughout Folsom in the past. The most memorable was the night that some of the goats actually escaped from their enclosure and were on Broadstone Parkway, and it happened to be National Night Out. So the fire department was all turning down their radios because they didn't want to have to go get goats off Broadstone Parkway, but.
Okay, I think we finished consent unless you have some comments. Oh, go ahead.
Well, with that information, and I do, I do realize that they don't only eat the grass, but they can reach up and eat the bark off trees. And I think we have an experiment that recently that happened. So I'm not sure when we write this contract and approve it that we make sure. I don't know how you can control that, but something has to be done.
They use enclosures, so the goats can only go within the enclosures unless they escape.
Well, they also use the plastic wrap around.
Right. Or just don't bring the goats near the animals, near the areas that they don't want eaten. With that, I'll move resolution 10146.
I'll second it.
Yeah, so my motion will be to approve, but based on commentary from all of us, just be wary of the contract and put the proper restrictions in place for different areas and sensitive areas, and use whatever means necessary, and just make that part of the contract if you had to do a contract addendum. So Stever, does that work for you as far as the way the motion's framed?
You got it, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, and I had a second from the vice mayor, so any further discussion on that?
Yep.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item this evening is your new business item 8A, Appeal of Planning Commission Recommendation for Folsom 2035 General Plan Approval.
And this is where I recuse myself, so I'll be back.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council. Stephen Wong, city attorney. Before you tonight is an appeal filed by planning commissioners Kevin Mallory and Aaron Rawls to the action of the planning commission on June 6, 2018, recommending that the city council certify the EIR for the 2035 general plan and also to adopt the 2035 general plan. The appeal was filed timely on June 18, 2018, and it is included in your staff report. Staff could be wrong, but it appears that the gist of the appeal is with respect to the provision in our municipal code stating that the planning commission shall prepare and adopt a master or general plan, and that the planning commission did not actually prepare the 2035 general plan. As explained in the staff report, section 17.04.050 is one of the early codes adopted by the city council following the city's incorporation in 1946, and the law have changed since then. You'll see it does show in annotation ID and prior code 3004, it's one of the early codes. While that particular section has not been updated in 45-plus years, the city is nonetheless required to comply with the latest legal requirements in state and federal law, as was court decision interpreting those laws. For example, changes in state law now precludes the planning commission from adopting the general plan. State law requires that the planning commission shall make a recommendation to the city council, but that the general plan may only be adopted by the city council. The planning commission may no longer adopt the general plan. Furthermore, section 2.02 of the city charter provides that all powers of the city shall be vested in the city council. Pursuant to that authority, the city council in 2012 adopted a resolution appointing Minter Harnish to prepare a draft of the 2035 general plan. The city council adopted the further resolutions to extend the contract with Minter Harnish in order to incorporate additional discussions and analysis and address the numerous edits, changes, and modifications to the draft general plan after receiving input and feedback from the public and various city commissions, including the planning commission. Following preparation of the 2035 general plan, the planning commission reviewed the draft on three separate occasions and provided input and feedback, including a planning commission workshop in 2017, another planning commission workshop in 2018, and planning commission public hearing on June 6, 2018. In acting on this appeal, the city council may grant the appeal and direct that the planning commissioners actually and physically write and prepare a new general plan for the city, but if I may ask, reserve the council's right to adopt the new general plan because that's what the law requires the council to do, not the planning commission, or deny the appeal. The mayor may at this time open the appeal proceeding.
Go ahead and open the appeal at this time, and I think the city clerk is going to walk us through the items, so I want to go ahead and read off that one, number two. So let me go ahead and officially open the public hearing on the appeal.
So the appellant will make a presentation to the city council. The time limit is 10 minutes, and it says the appellant's may divide speaking time between various speakers, but cumulative total speaking time is 10 minutes.
Okay, so the appellant's can come forward and identify yourselves.
Okay, good afternoon. Aaron Rawls, planning commissioner and city of Folsom resident for 30 years. So during this general plan update, we just started to see some things that were going on that we didn't really have direct input in, and when we started researching that, that's when we found the codes that Commissioner Mallory will be addressing here. Some of the items that Mr. Wong just brought up wasn't made aware to me until just now, so we were going off the facts that we had prior to coming here tonight, wherein we thought that as planning commissioners, we should have more of a direct involvement since we live in the city as well as the city council. Kind of seemed odd to us that so many outside influences had such a major part in developing our general plan. And someone that's lived here for a long time and truly loves this town, I thought that, you know, anything I can do to kind of get a fair shake or get the word out to the city council would be good because we know that by the time you guys see things, you just have the vote, and you don't know what goes on behind the scene at the planning commissioners' meetings that we have, some of which have gone rather late. So Commissioner Mallory will go through what we have here, and we know we're short on time. Thank you. Yeah, well, let, put that for pause for a second. Just so everybody knows, we get minutes of every lower commission meeting when items come to us. So every time you guys have a planning commission meeting, if the items come to us, we have the minutes. We get to review the minutes of the meeting. So I just want to make sure you guys are comfortable that we actually get, we get to see those, too.
And just to add to that, I watch most of the planning commission meetings.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so go ahead. And I'll stop it, okay, because we have, if we ask questions, I don't want to take your time when we're asking questions. That's why I stop at each time for you, so don't feel like you're going to be rushed if we're asking questions.
Thank you. We'll be happy to have provoked thought on the topic. Appreciate it. So we're here tonight to inform the city council that we believe that the process to draft a new master plan for the city of Folsom was carried out in violation of the municipal code. Mr. Wong spoke to the key phrases, "prepare" and "adopt," mostly focusing on the "adopt" portion. I'll focus here on the "prepare" portion, which I believe is most relevant. We have a very simple remedy and proposal to this problem. I'm planning commissioner Kevin Mallory. I'm here with planning commissioner Aaron Rawls. We proudly serve this council on the Folsom Planning Commission, and we have paid $458 to speak to you on this appeal tonight about this important matter. During the June 6 planning commission meeting, a 4-3 vote was submitted in favor of recommending adoption of the 2035 general plan and EIR.
Let me stop you for a second. I thought Commissioner Rawls was not at that meeting when that was adopted.
Commissioner Rawls was not at the meeting.
Okay, so it couldn't have been a 4-3 vote. That's seven members. You only had six.
Thank you for the correction. It was.
I just want to make sure the record.
Thank you.
I'm not chastising Aaron because obviously for whatever his reason, I just want to make sure we're accurate on the facts. It was 4-2.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Go ahead.
I did not vote to recommend. As you may be aware, Folsom Municipal Code Chapter 1704 details the planning commission roles and responsibilities. Specifically, 1704050 relates to the planning commission's duty to prepare and adopt Folsom's general and specific plans. It's listed here to my left. It states that the planning commission shall, as soon as practicable, prepare and adopt a master or general plan and precise plans. The municipal code clearly requires the planning commission to prepare and adopt a master or a general plan. We have heard the opinion that this was, that this portion of our municipal code might simply be outdated, and that the planning commission involvement in directly preparing or guiding preparation of a general plan is inappropriate for lack of expertise. Ignoring portions of our municipal code that seem old would set a dangerous precedence for circumventing Folsom's existing laws. This opinion is also at odds with the published opinion of the League of California Cities responsible for training planning commissioners and advising city governments statewide. Their pamphlet titled "The Planning Commissioner's Role" assigns the following responsibilities to planning commissioners relative to general plans. Assist in writing the general plan and hold public hearings in its adoption. The Folsom Planning Commission did not prepare or assist writing any draft versions of our general plan. This was stated during the recording planning commission hearing on June 6 and agreed upon by planning commissioner Ross Jackson, our community development director, one consultant, and city legal counsel. When questioned at the hearing, council dear kings stated that our city council had directed the community development department to work closely with hired consultants to compile our plan. This course of action did not fulfill the municipal code requirement, and ignoring this discrepancy between the municipal code mandate and the actual planning process may cast permanent doubts over the validity of the plans. To any who might wonder why this appeal is being submitted so late in the planning process, the final planning commission meeting to review the general plan draft on June 6 was the first recognition that the planning commission was to have no meaningful role in its preparation. This appeal is the first opportunity to remedy that oversight. We believe that our municipal code requires those who are appointed by elected officials to direct the production of our general plan as a means of ensuring that the document will not fail to address every matter deemed important by the appointed residents who comprise the planning commission on behalf of the elected residents of our city council. Employed staff and paid consultants have a valuable role to play, no doubt, but they have no requirement to reside in our community. No one party would be appropriate to produce our general plan in isolation. We think that the community development department, in tandem with subject matter experts and consultants, are intended by language in our municipal code to have a reactive, subordinate role to the, in the composition of the general plan. The parties who prepared and presented our general plan took no advance guidance from the planning commission. They merely requested and received passive commentary and largely inconsequential feedback in response to the presentation of nearly completed drafts. On June 12, on July 24, 2012, the community development department led by David Miller advised the city council, quote, "To guide the development of the general plan, staff and the consultants proposed the city council appoint a general plan steering committee. And rather than informing the city council that our municipal code mandates the planning commission to prepare the general plan, staff advised that the committee could optionally include officials from the planning commission. This oversight marginalized the planning commission throughout the most critical planning event that our city will undertake in the next, in the next several decades." The staff recommendation prepared for you tonight has asked you to choose one of two poor choices. Either one, ignore the existing municipal code and deny this appeal, or two, grant this appeal and discard the draft general plan so that the planning commission... appeal and discard the draft general plan so that the Planning Commission can begin anew. Recommending an option that completely discards such an expensive investment of labor is irresponsible and unnecessary. We are suggesting a much easier path to abide by Folsom Municipal Code 1704050. Simply provide each Planning Commissioner one draft copy of our general plan for redlining and revisions, along with time to meet once as a body after these edits have been combined by staff and experts for discussion, deliberation, modifications, and a final vote to recommend a document that has actually been prepared by Folsom's Planning Commission. Should this matter be further examined by the Sacramento Grand Jury or any other interested party, the additional time granted for the Folsom Planning Commission to produce a contribution and vote on the modified draft will be one way to represent compliance with the letter and likely the intent of our municipal code. We hope you will find that the planning process ought to be guided by the people most affected by it, Folsom residents, and we expect you will determine that our municipal code ought to be adhered to. We respectfully recommend your approval of this appeal. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Can you do me a favor? Can you go back to the one of the League of Cities, just because I want to show that one for...
Yes.
So, you know, you put something up there, and you comment that this is the League of Cities policy, but in your own thing, if you'd read it, it says assistant...
I read it.
Assistant writing the general plan, hold public hearings on its adoption. Doesn't say you adopt it. In fact, it goes on to say, "The governing body retains authority to actually adopt the general plan." It doesn't, this isn't giving you authority. First of all, we're not under bound in legal authority of League of California Cities. We're just a member.
Understood.
But you've actually put something in front of us that actually backs up what we've been saying all along.
It does not.
It says, "The governing body retains authority to actually adopt the general plan," because that is state law.
You're focusing on the "adopt" portion. I'm focusing on the "prepare" portion. The "prepare" portion says assist in writing the general plan.
Okay. I'm pointing out something. We're going to get both of these covered. That's the first one I'm going to show you. Number two, we're not bound by whatever League of California City says because we don't agree with a lot of stuff that they do and vice versa. So, but I do have a couple of questions here for you. You know, you talk about in preparation, and you said that you want to have an opportunity to redline and comment and so on and so forth. You had three workshops. What'd you guys do in those three workshops?
Passively.
And again, I'm not trying to be, you know, aggressive with you, but I want to know what you guys did because that's part of your charge is when this thing is put in front of you, if you're not sure, you don't understand, you ask questions, you ask for direction, and you give direction.
I thoroughly appreciate you kicking the tires on this issue. Due diligence is important.
Don't patronize me. Just get to the answer.
I'm not patronizing you. I'm answering your question.
Yeah, no, but you don't need the commentary to thank me for that. So just go right to the, it's okay, Kevin. We know each other.
Superfluity on both sides. We can exchange ideas cordially.
Yeah, I know we can.
Thank you. So we passively listened to near-completed summaries of draft versions of the general plan with cursory discussions that resulted in next to no meaningful impact to the plan itself.
Well, let's go back a little bit. So to that answer, February 2017, and you remember from one of the slides up there, we had to extend the contract because we had a lot more things to do. So your comment just now is not relevant to February 2017 because it just started. Now, albeit, the two of you were brand new there, so I wouldn't expect a lot out of it because, as I was a Planning Commissioner, Carrie, and even, we would all look like deer in headlights, and rightfully so. I mean, the document's this thick. I don't disagree with that. But from your time a year later, and knowing this process has been going on, and you saw the document in March of 18, what occurred then?
What occurred? Can you specify? Can you explain your question?
What was your involvement when it was put in front of me in March of 18? It was a regular, full-on workshop. I read the minutes. I know she saw it with me. I read the minutes. I'd like you to tell us, you know, I'm hearing your concerns, so...
Good question. February 2017.
No, I'm talking about March of 2018, this year. February 17, I'm not holding against you guys. You're brand new.
Yes.
I wouldn't expect a lot out of you. So that's a gimme because I wouldn't expect any out of me, quite frankly. Heck, I was here for a year, and there's a lot of things that went over my head.
During many of the...
But March of 18, that hearing was a full-on workshop. You guys spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, that was a longer meeting. During many of our meetings, sitting on the Planning Commission, irregardless of what is typically brought up, there's typically, you know, a four-to-three type vote situation every time. Mr. Mallory, Ms. Lane, and myself typically being the three that would vote no against something if we see an issue such as the drastic decrease in the level of service, which is part of this general plan you're being asked to approve tonight. So it's often very hard. While we may interject as much as possible, it feels like rather than steering the car to get to where we need to go, we're kind of at the destination, and then they're like, "Okay, what do you want to do?" It's almost like it's too late at that point. We don't, we don't have the interaction. We've never been able to have a meeting with staff. We've never been able to seem to get the attention of the staff the way the building industry is able...
Have you requested meetings with staff one-on-one or two-on-one?
Several times.
And our staff told you no?
It just kind of doesn't get addressed. Sari actually did reach out to me a few weeks ago, asking me for a day that would work, but I felt that...
But that's the city attorney's office. What interaction were you denied?
I requested it from David Miller. I've requested it from Pamela Johns on record. It's happened several times because I think that the city...
And they wouldn't meet with you?
I have not had any meetings. No, I don't want it with just me. I want a meeting with everyone. I feel like we're all part of...
But Aaron, you can only do that, there's a whole bunch of other rules and regulations.
Yeah, that's...
That has to be a publicly...
It'll be a Brown Act violation unless it's public.
Has to be a publicly agendized meeting. And, you know, I'm just going to jump on what Steve was talking about with regard to the redline issue. And I'm not giving him a pass on February 2017. You guys had already been Planning Commissioners for a couple of months at that point. I was a brand-new Planning Commissioner, and this would be, at the four years that I served on the Planning Commission, this would be about 25% of the package.
Right.
And I can tell you, and Pam actually was in her previous employment at the City of Folsom, and she will tell you that I had redlines of every document. If I had a question, a comment, to the point of a spelling mistake. I'm sure that the first year I spent on the Planning Commission was absolute torture for the community development staff. And I would even warn them, "Look, I had no social events over the weekend, so I spent the entire weekend going through the documents." You guys had at least three opportunities that we know of to read through the entire document, just like I did over the course of the last couple of days, and make any comments, questions, suggestions, whatever you wanted, including the subject of the traffic levels of service, which is something that I understand very well. With regard to whether or not the Planning Commission itself, the Commissioners, should be writing, physically writing the document, or if they should be doing anything other than...
We do not believe that.
Anything other than redlining, that's all you guys should be doing. The comment about it should be written by residents of the City of Folsom, I'm a civil engineer. I'm actually qualified to write a document like this, but this is not in my normal course of my work activity, so I would never even contemplate doing that, redline the heck out of it absolutely all day long. With regard to the residents of the City of Folsom writing the master plan, I design corrosion protection systems for pipelines and new civil engineering, and for somebody suggests that somebody who doesn't live in a jurisdiction that has probably at least a bachelor's degree and probably a master's degree in planning is not qualified to work on a document because they don't live in that city is preposterous.
I don't think that was said at all or implied. What we are implying is that people that live in this town certainly have a little more skin in the game and would want to steer a development, especially one as drastic as the 2035, the general plan will be.
And all you guys had to do was read it, redline it, make your comments known to the staff, have it discussed in those public meetings.
And we do that, but that doesn't stop it. It just continues to go. We haven't really been able to affect any change on that front.
Okay, so let me reach out to you because you said something earlier about a vote. And I appreciate what you're saying because unfortunately, my time in the Planning Commission, I was one of the outsiders, always usually on the losing end of vote because I had a different ideology than my colleagues, and that's what I'm hearing. What I'm not hearing is that you weren't precluded from participating, you weren't precluded from redlining those up, but unfortunately, some of the things that you guys were bringing forward as Commissioners, your colleagues weren't agreeing to, some of it, all of it, none of it, I don't know. But I heard, you know, there were some 4-3 votes on some suggestions you were made, and I can certainly appreciate it gets very frustrating, to say the least.
Reinterpreting a very clear and very obvious municipal code to...
Well, I appreciate what you're saying. However, you look at the code date on that, and you've just been instructed, first of all, my obvious question, let's get to the preparation question. Number one, did you guys read the City Charter from 1990? The City Charter is very clear what our role and responsibility to City Council is. It also makes it very clear when state law and federal law is updated that you guys preparing doesn't mean you write it. In fact, it actually calls out very specifically, it's illegal for you guys to write it. So that was pretty clear, and all those resources are available to you. So go ahead.
We would agree that writing it would be outside the scope of what we're prepared to handle, but we just feel like it would be...
But you are preparing it. That's why, you know, people, that's why it comes to you first. It doesn't just come to us. It goes through you guys, and if you guys aren't ready to adopt...
It comes to us in a packet, sometimes several, wherein city staff is recommending...
Aaron, that's exactly what we got.
This is the draft that you guys, this is what you guys sent us, and prior to that, like you guys, we saw some early stages, and that's why we had to renew contracts and stuff like that. I appreciate what you're saying, but my point I'm making is, you guys, if the Planning Commission wasn't ready to send us a recommendation, you keep working on it because that's what your charge is.
But that is not what happens. It just gets voted and goes through.
Well, unfortunately, you're at the other end of the vote. That's what I'm saying. I don't disagree with your sentiment, you know, but you have colleagues that say, "No, we think we're ready to go send it through."
Sure, I understand that part of it. That's why I just, when I had requested the meetings from the various, you know, David Miller and Pamela Johns, I had thought that it would be beneficial to have the people that are involved with this city sitting in the same room, record it, put it on for people to watch so we're not a Brown Act...
And that actually happens at the Planning Commission.
So that we're able to have a roundtable discussion and kind of steer this.
To which people, so I can understand what request you made that wasn't granted? I don't understand the request.
What city people?
For the city planning staff, the city attorneys, the City Council, it seems like...
We can't be in the same meeting when you guys are going to be recommending a document to us. We can't be in that same meeting.
But this, I'm talking if we were able to preface us recommending it, to where we actually all kind of roundtable and have input on creating it.
Process doesn't allow us to sit with you guys when you're in that preparation phase of what your charge is. That's why we have a separation like this. That's why we appoint you guys on behalf of the community. You are the eyes and ears inside work.
When it comes to that actual plan, I agree. I know what you're saying on that, but I meant in general. You've got the Planning Commissioner, Parks and Rec Commission, city planning, city attorneys, and it's like the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing sometimes. When we first showed up, or when I first showed up to be on the Planning Commission, I sat in that front row with a packet this big, and no one told me hi, bye, where to sit. I didn't know anything. I got more help from Ms. Fremantle today on how to work this than I've ever got the whole time I've been on the Planning Commission. Literally, no one even took the time to do that.
I can't answer that because unfortunately, you know, I can't answer, not there, wasn't know what the history of what your requests are.
That's a year ago. I kind of got the hang of it now.
Yeah, no, I can understand. I mean, I know it can be frustrating. I know what it was like when I got here, as a matter of fact.
And then when it comes to this, we know this is before you guys for approval tonight, and yet are the traffic, the level of service, everything's going to degrade the city to such a great extent.
That's a different item, so you can't bring in the appeal.
This is literally kind of like our last hope. We pulled up the municipal code, and it showed that. Steve hadn't emailed me the other, you know, pieces that had went with that.
Those documents were also available to you as well as all the other rules and regulations in the state and federal documents.
Well, that's correct, but Mr. Mallory had reached out to Steve prior to this as well. You know, like Mr. Mallory said, we spent our own money bringing this before you guys and to bring attention to the public that we just think the Planning Commission should have more input on steering our path rather than just being in the backseat while we end up there.
Well, your role isn't to steer it. Your role is to make commentary as, so very simply, in the preparation, and I know the definition of preparation is in the staff report, so everybody can read it. I'm not going to read it. That's not time well spent. But the bottom line is, the charge of the Planning Commission is to receive the information that we, as a council, as hired a consultant, we have worked with our staff, city manager and his staff has said, "This is the direction as far as the preparation." I mean, back up a little bit. These experts do general plans all day long, all year, I mean, that's their expertise. I'm not an expert in it. You guys are an expert in it. So we have to lie and have trust and have faith in the experts we hire. If they bring something in front of you that's not well-understood or doesn't follow the direction that you guys, whether it be all seven of you, three of you, one of you, two of you, whatever, you give input. That's the redlining, that's the conversation, and I understand it. You guys were denied that opportunity.
We respect your interpretation of the process, and we believe that the bottom line is simple adherence to our municipal code.
No, that isn't the bottom line, Kevin. That is against the law right there.
That is the law.
No, it's not.
That is our municipal code as it's on the books today.
The Charter preempts and trumps the municipal code.
Will you please cite the section of the Charter that you believe trumps?
I think Mr. Wong already did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2.02.
2.02, City Charter.
Will you quote 2.02 for me, please?
Were you also given a copy of the staff report for this evening's item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, those codes are in there as well.
Yep.
That allows us to control everything. And now, as well as the other thing that's in the staff report that Mr. Wong pointed out, that state law very clearly defines it's illegal for you guys to write and use, you're using, trying to, in fact, you're not even using the right definition of "prepare." Again, I have to read the dictionary version of it. I don't want to do that.
Please do.
Okay, then your argument's going to go downhill very quickly.
And, Mr. Mayor, after you do that, may I suggest that we get back to the appeal sequence as presented by the city clerk?
Well, I'm actually, I don't disagree with that, but I'm asking them questions while they're here, and I don't think it's relevant or, I think I need to finish asking them the questions, and then we'll get to the public, if it's okay.
So while you look that up, I'll just say it appears that you...
It's right in front of me. I'll read it for you.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines "prepare" as "prepare means to work out the details of and to put into written form."
We did not do that.
Was it not in front of you three times?
We did not work out the details in written form.
You were there to...
We reviewed the written form presented by a consultant and staff team.
And did you not ask for changes? I just heard Commissioner Rawls say you guys suggested changes, and you were being voted down.
Correct. So it's my understanding that you're using City Charter 2.02 to claim the right to ignore the municipal code. Would you say that's accurate?
No, that's not accurate. We're following state law. Would you say that's accurate?
I don't believe you're abiding by the law if you interpret 1704050 to mean that the Planning Commission has no role in preparing the general plan and the specific plans of this city.
Okay, Steve, would you like to read state government code so Mr. Rawls understands why we have the authority to...
Mallory.
I'm sorry, Mallory. I apologize, Kevin.
Thank you, sir.
And also in there, it says, "State law, Government Code Section 65354," which is up there, "is legally impermissible for the Planning Commission to adopt a general plan." Provides that the Planning Commission can choose to make a recommendation, but the general plan shall be adopted by the City Council," and that's the Government Code 65356.
Agree with you on the issue of adoption, disagree with you on the issue of preparation.
Okay, well, you're wordsmithing something that doesn't exist, and we're obviously legally entitled to interpret. entitled to interpret. In fact, I'll even argue that we've had no less than at least six lawyers on planning commissions that have actually served as city council members, and they've never, ever, ever interpreted the way you're trying to interpret the word prepare, because the word prepare, as I just read to you, is very clear.
I've got the Merriam-Webster dictionary, definition of preparation, the action or process of making something ready for use or service or getting ready for some occasion, test or duty. I, I've looked up several other definitions. I didn't see any that spoke to writing.
Prepare means to work out the details of and to put into written form. That's exactly what you guys have done.
Respectfully, it's not.
You, you had input and direction through three, at least three workshops, directed to staff and/or consultants through your commentary, through your public hearings and through your deliberations. And because the deliberate, the vote after your deliberations didn't go your way, you feeling that you weren't actually preparing the general plan. And I argue, and very succinctly, you did. It's clear.
Someone else prepared the general plan and presented it before us. It, it would be the equivalent of sitting down at a restaurant, eating a plate that I didn't prepare, but I'm going to eat it.
I don't agree with that analogy.
We, we didn't really get to prepare. We, we got to review it is what the word should be. We reviewed it.
Just, just one other comment.
To work out the details, that's what prepare means, per the dictionary. And you did have a chance to work out the details. You had input, you had opportunities to redline and comment. As you, as your testimony said, you did. But unfortunately, you just said in your testimony that you said, you had things that you, okay, Commissioner Rawls said in his testimony that he was.
I believe you're wordsmithing now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I don't know, I can run back the tape if I have to, but Aaron, did you not say that you actually brought out some things and they, and just, they weren't listening to it and they steered it the way they wanted to go and you lost on a four-three vote?
Many times, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Did you just hear what he just said? He just backed up what he said earlier, which is what I just reiterate. I'm not wordsmithing.
I don't think he was in agreement with you.
Steve, in, in addition to that, Kevin, to go back to your comments, you said that the remedy would be to have the opportunity to redline the document and get those comments heard and addressed. You had at least three opportunities since the beginning of February to do that, and you chose not to do it.
Incorrect. I can tell you that, that changes submitted to the planning department prior to and at the meeting were only addressed in portion and not in whole. There was a section, there's, there's an overlay district along Bidwell that allows for thirty dwelling unit per acre density.
And I read the comments and those, there were, there were changes made based on your comments.
There was one change made to address the portion of my comments that talked about zoning open space land. There was nothing to address the portion of the dwelling units along Bidwell.
I saw a response that provided that data.
Let me ask you this, Kevin, were you talking about the specific project that's being built there?
I'm talking about the.
Or a policy.
The overlay zoning along Bidwell.
I know, but you've said something about a thirty unit, something, you're talking about the policy of like thirty units to an acre, something like that? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, the mixed, the mixed use zoning, I believe, allows for higher density zoning down Bidwell.
But you're talking about future, not currently what's approved.
Talking about the zoning in the general plan? I'm not sure I follow you.
Of the new, of the new, okay. What I'm hearing is, I'm, I'm, that's one need clarification. Were your comments directed to a project that's already approved and the current zoning for that area? Or are you talking about going forward in the next general plan?
Going forward.
That's, that's what I needed here.
Steve, in addition to that, that, what he's referring to is included in one of the letters and there's a detailed, a detailed response.
I saw a letter. I just, I wanted to hear his specificity of that word.
But there was a specific response that he was responded to by staff.
Let me, let me add my say for a minute here. You know, just to qualify, I was also a planning commissioner for about a year and a half, and I left it when I lost my wife.
Thank you for your service.
Well, I, you know, and I also sat for five years, from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety, never missed a meeting, never missed a meeting, okay? Not that I got a lot out of it because I was pretty ignorant on, on the topics, but I was there. In nineteen eighty-six, as the chairman of the park commission, our park commissioner sat down and wrote the general input for the, for the plant, for the park master plan, okay? We sat in the guy's house, sat on our button in the living room and we wrote it, okay? But that wasn't the general plan. That was just a part of the input that we did that. And why could we do that? Because we, we use national standards. We all were recreational type people. That's what they put on the park commission at, at that time. And so that's what we got. And it stood three evaluations by consultants, okay? They turned it upside down and with minor modification. But what we're talking about here is a general plan, okay? And I think you, you're, you're asking to take a bite out of something that you can't handle, okay? No. Now, it's, I'm, I'm being realistic. I'm not going to fight with you on dictionary, I'm not going to fight you on opinions and that. I'm just going back to thirty years of serving this city with a realistic view. And I lived in this city for thirty years, thirty-two years to be probably exact, okay? And I know, and I was down in the, in the, for twenty-two years, I was down in the, in the, in the streets with the people, okay? So I, I, I can do that, but, you know, when you come on a commission, unless you come on with an expertise, say in planning, which neither one of you did, and that's not, that's not necessarily, you know.
Do you know my background, sir?
No, but I assumed you would have.
Please don't assume.
No, I'm, you know, no, I don't know everything. And you don't know everything and that, that's, you know, you have to accept that, okay? But for you to, 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 first of all, you don't make, it's not the planning commission or the park commission or any other commission to channel the direction of the city at the time. That's what this council is, is, is did. That's what we got elected to be as representative of the city. However, it's, the job is too big and that's why you have seven commissions to help us, okay?
We're happy to serve you.
You don't, you don't, you input policy ideas. You don't make policy, okay? Now, sometimes that gets out of sight and nobody understands it, but you don't make policy. You give us suggestions and we need that suggestion to make a decent one, okay? But for you to think you can sit down and write a general plan input on your own.
Did not say that.
What are we talking about then? Will somebody tell me in the audience, is everyone the hell are we talking about?
I can make a simple summary for you.
No, you, no, no, no. You, you come up with an obsolete code, which I, I admit, we should have probably had a better process of updating our codes, okay? But if you think a code written fifty years ago when the city was about three thousand people is applicable to the, to the city of seventy-eight thousand today, eh, bad on us because we didn't have the code. But that's just an excuse for you to come back here and throw out, well, you didn't use your, your authority to, to redline and argue.
Mr. Sheldon, the reason we, we use that municipal code is we, we were sent down to Los Angeles for two or three days to training put on by the League of California Cities. It was our interpretation then, as well as until just tonight, that that is kind of what we are guided off of. Otherwise, I'm not sure why we were sent down there for the training that we both went to and spent several days at. So to, to say that that's an antiquated, you know, code, that's what we were sent down to learn on, so.
No, no, I'm talking about my, I'm talking about the general, the municipal code that you're, you're making, you're, you're, you're putting your whole argument on that because we didn't give you the opportunity to sit down and write it, not review it and, and criticize and redline it at the times you had, that that's a major violation and you're making the assumption, I believe, and I'm going to make that assumption, that that's your assumption, that you could do a better job. And I say, tell me why.
Absolutely not.
Well, you still had the input three times. I'm not saying, I, I don't like the process. I'm going to have more discussion after this public input. But I think we're, we're just getting hung up on insignificant things and doing what this city needs to have done. We're not going to start over for anybody's idea. We've put in thirty years of hard work to get where we are now. Who in the devil thinks you can start over again?
Not the city actually presented you with that option, and we do not think starting over is a good option because we like most of the product presented by consultants. We just feel that there's an opportunity to abide by our municipal code. And respectfully, if you ignore a portion of the municipal code because of some arbitrary age, you will set a dangerous precedence for future council members to cherry pick.
No, that's an opinion. That's your opinion. That's not necessary in fact. Okay, you're making an opinion, we would do that. Okay, the reason we probably didn't do it has been fifty years old and we haven't been in, mostly in this room. I doubt as anybody here has been in this city fifty years, okay? So it's a process that, sure, we'll take, I'll take, you know, I'll be, I'll be fair, we should have changed it. But that's one of many, there's probably other MCs in there that we should change and bring that current. But you're just hanging that on to, to kill what happened to this date and to say that you are going to do a better job than our staff and our consultants. I can't believe it.
No, I'm simply saying that the guidance of the general plan belongs in the hand of electeds and appointments who reside here instead of staff and consultants who don't necessarily need to reside here. We are a different type of stakeholder, you and I, than somebody who prepares a plan for us who does not reside here.
Well, since you made that point, let me ask you, Aaron, you mentioned you're here thirty years and I believe it. How long have you been a city resident?
About five.
Five years, okay. So I'll give you five years of experience, but I'll give you your thirty years you lived through this. But you, you probably didn't get involved as you are recently, I'm sure of that, in the city operations. And I don't expect everybody in town to be involved, okay? But I, I think we're, we're hung up on who should do what, what we got to look at, what, what have we got in our hands right now and how good, and it's not, it has not been approved yet. I'll be very frank with the staff and thing, I've got a long ways and I've got some discussion.
Yeah, let's stick to the appeal for a good ten. But Kevin, you said something interesting. I just have to follow up with the question. So as, if I heard you correctly, you're saying you felt that all the consultants should be residents of Folsom to help prepare this?
No, sir. I'm saying that circumstantial, circumstantially, if we look at the qualities of electeds, appointed and the qualities of staff and consultants, it's necessary that the appointed and the electeds live here. The residents are a different type of stakeholder. It's not requisite that staff and consultants reside here. So it's not requisite that they are the same type of a stakeholder as a resident. And I am asking you to give control of the guidance of the plan to residents.
Let's, let's back up a little bit. Your, your, your biggest concern, as I heard you, is that the appointed and the electeds need to be residents of the city.
No, sir.
Say that again.
Slight shift in words. I'm not saying that they.
Say what you just said about the appointed and the electeds.
I'm saying that appointed and electeds are necessarily residents here.
They have to be. Let's clarify that. They have to be.
That's what necessarily means, I under, as I understand it.
Let's just, just make it easy plain English for people to understand. So go ahead. So they have to be. In case people don't know, in order to be a commissioner or a city council member, you have to be a registered voter, have to be eighteen, and you have to reside in the city.
Correct.
Okay, so now, you're saying, you feel that staff should have to live here?
No, sir. I'm saying that.
I'm just asking the questions.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, and you're saying consultants don't necessarily have to live here?
That's simple fact.
Okay. Because the simple fact is, to use your language, is it's impossible for all the expertise that we develop in the city to come up with what we've come up in the city, to have all these experts and let alone staff living here. And by choice, some staff people don't want to live here because they're maybe from an area where they absolutely enjoy and still live there. So I, I hear what you're saying, but.
I also value their perspectives.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. The key is, however, when they're here, there's a reason they're here. They work for the city and I'll defy anybody telling me that any staff member or any employee of the city of Folsom doesn't value their community. And I've been all over this country for many, many years.
This is not their community.
It is their community. They take it as their community. It can be an employee and still call it their community, can they not?
They can take stewardship of this community, but if they do not have an address here, this is not their community.
Well, you can wordsmith that one too. They don't have to necessarily live here to say, this is my community, I have a love of my community because I'm an employee of this city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
We're, we're kind of getting off base with that one.
Yes, sir. There is a protocol and a sequence of the appeal.
So I think, so if you guys.
That's all we have for our portion.
Okay, so we'll take any public testimony. So thank you, guys. Hang close because you have closing, you have closing arguments available to you.
Thank you.
So we have two requests?
Yes. Okay, so we have two requests to speak under the member of the public, public hearing portion. There will be a time limit of three minutes per member of the public. Our first speaker is Jaya Bediga. Jaya will be followed by Barbara Larry.
Maria Steiner. The three.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, members of the city council.
Okay, go.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I ran for Folsom City Council unsuccessfully in 2010, and I was appointed as a member of the library commission. I served for two years, for 2011 and 2012. Under no circumstances in those two years was I ever under the misconception that I had the power to change the course of the city library without input from the city staff that ran the library and without the proper protocols or procedures in place that allowed me to provide input on what the direction should be. At that time, were we disappointed that the additional library in Vista was closed to the public? Yes, we were. And did we take the proper channel and routes to communicate our disappointment and comments to the city department that managed the library and to city council? Yes, we did. And did we get funding when we were able to get property taxes back and reinvest in the library? Yes, we did. We have to allow unfunded planning commission members who aren't unfunded in the terms of not having the mandate of the city's electoral population to be restricted to provide input in the protocols and laws that govern our city and our state. And I ask this council to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, your, your next speaker is Barbara Larry.
Maria Steiner. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening. I have been listening to this whole conversation going on here, and I wanted to point out some things that I think have either been misconceived or at least not clarified for the public, and that is, there was a long period of time in which the public had input into this plan. Back in January and February of 2017, their staff held hearings on one-on-one basis at the public library. Anybody from the public could go in, read the general plan or, you know, at, online and come in with comments and ask questions and then provide input to the general plan. So update. So in response to all that, I came in, talked to the staff. I was only one of two people that showed up that day and I would like to see more people become involved in the process and take the time to read through these plans and provide input. And, but the opportunity was there. I submitted three pages of requests for changes in the plan, and I would say that about two-thirds of them were accepted. I, I can list another half a dozen people that I am aware of that also submitted changes. There's a table in the back of the final document that shows how many of the public showed up and what kinds of requests were made for changes and what changes were accepted. And I would like to encourage the public to continue to participate at that level. So I think that it's a little bit of an overstatement that the planning commission didn't have enough input into the general plan in that all of the residents of Folsom had an opportunity for input. It might be nice if the city was able to advertise better or get the word out or somehow get people more involved so that they would show up for these hearings and submit public testimony. But I think, I, I didn't feel like I didn't have the opportunity to do that. And I've been doing this, as you all know, for twenty-five, twenty-six years, and I've learned how to read the documents over that time period. And when I haven't understood something, the staff has been available to me to answer questions. me to answer questions. So I hope that other commissioners and members of the public will feel like they can have input into these processes.
How many years did you spend on a park commission?
Four. Four.
Four, okay. Didn't you also do library or something besides park? Did you do library also?
No, I've been on the Arts Commission for the last eight years.
That's what it was, arts, okay.
Yeah, I was on the Parks Commission for four years in the 90s.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your next speaker is Jennifer Lane.
Hi, Jennifer.
Thank you. Long night. My name is Jennifer Lane. I was appointed to the Planning Commission by Ernie Sheldon roughly seven years ago. I've probably been absent maybe three times in seven years. I have a pretty good record of showing up. I would like to comment that audience participation is very rare, the Planning Commission, unless, of course, a neighborhood has an issue, usually with a vacant lot next to them and what's going to happen. But, you know, I support Kevin and Erin. I feel like I was kind of the lone wolf for six years. The vote was a lot of times six to one. But I think it gave me thick skin through that time. And I stuck with it. And I feel like every decision I made was the best I could make with what I had to work with. You mentioned, Steve, that you read the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. And before every meeting, the chair says, "Are the minutes approved?" But we don't have any minutes in front of us. There's nothing. So it would be nice if we had those minutes to look at.
From the last meeting?
From any meeting.
I don't, you guys approve, you guys are asked to approve minutes at a meeting, and you're not giving them minutes?
And there's no minutes.
Okay, well, that's a flaw from whatever happened at your level, but we have them here. That's how I knew Mr. Rawls was not at the last Planning Commission.
So during that-
Jennifer, I think it's important to clarify. What you're referring to is our detailed, word-by-word minutes?
Right.
No, those are no longer prepared.
That we used to get at the Historic District Commission.
That was many, many moons ago. All of the minutes that are provided are basically paraphrased. There's a summary of who spoke and what the action items were. Jennifer, you have the same ability as any of us or anybody in the general public that wants to watch a meeting. They can go back and watch it online.
I have many tapes of many meetings, yes.
You don't even need the tapes anymore. You can watch them right on your laptop. I watch them. And if I have questions about things that have happened-
Well, that was before the laptop.
At this city council meeting, I'll either watch it on Comcast Channel 14 on Saturday or I'll go home and look at the portion of the meeting that I have a question about.
So go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, that's, that's, let it finish.
Well, really, that's all I wanted to say, is when we are sitting up there to approve minutes, and there are no minutes, and I have mentioned that before, because I know when I was on the Historic District Commission, we had, you know, paraphrased how the meeting went. So those were minutes. And if something was off kilter, I could say something. Oh, no, this is right. This is wrong. Anyway, I just, I like the support of the two gentlemen that have been on for over a year. What happened at that last Planning Commission meeting, and if you watched the tapes, then you saw that Deborah Grossel and her friend Terry, who was an attorney, they were, they brought up several different points regarding the general plan and things that I missed. So I picked up on that. And I asked the question to Pam Johns about, something that got my attention was that we were not a disadvantaged city. And I said, "Well, can you explain that?" Because I know neighborhoods that are disadvantaged. And I was told that it has to do with pollution.
Okay, so Jennifer, we're getting into the whole-
No, I just wanted to give you that one little part. So that's why I voted no, is I felt I didn't have enough information. I felt that it was too rushed, as they did. And so that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Good point. Thanks, Jennifer.
Your next speaker is Bob Holderness.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, Robert G. Holderness, 108 Wild River Lane in Folsom, rising tonight as a private citizen, not representing any client's interest. I'm frankly disappointed to see that two of our Planning Commissioners don't have a good understanding of what their role is in city government. And I laud Councilmember Sheldon for pointing out that it is the city council that sets policy, that gives direction. And the Planning Commission is really, in this instance certainly, an advisory body and is asked to make a recommendation to you and nothing more. It sounds, as Councilmember Howell has pointed out, that perhaps they didn't understand their assignment, that they had more work to do than they apparently did in fact do. And that's unfortunate. I don't feel that their appeal has merit. I think that the process that was undertaken in this case was appropriate. It was consistent with the way Folsom has done general plan, general plan amendments as far back as I know. And I know that Ernie and I and a couple of other people in town were there on October 31, 1988, Happy Halloween, trick-or-treat, when the 1988 general plan was adopted. And it was well done. This is well done. And I laud you for it. And I hope that you will deny the appeal and move on to adopting the general plan as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Anybody, it's your last chance, otherwise I'm closing this, the public hearing side. Ma'am, are you coming down? Okay. Anybody else, please, give me a blue slip now, because after her, that will be the last speaker, unless you turn one in now. Go ahead and come down, please.
Hi, my name is Janine Annalise Ferrer. I've been a member of this community for 20 years. And I have a very specific question. A couple of times tonight, the mention has been made of redline documents. I would like to find out if those redline documents and comments by either council members or city officials, staff, or members of any commission, are they available to the general public under the Freedom of Information Act?
Well, okay, so there wouldn't be redline documents on this thing because we just got it. So but if there was redline documents that commissioners, lower commissioners brought to the meeting, that is for them?
If I may address that, Mr. Mayor, under the California Public Workers Act, citizens have the right and staff are actually required to assist citizens from retrieving and reviewing documents when available. One, and there are very few exceptions, because the policy and the state law favors public disclosure and involvement of the public in all government operations. One of those rare exceptions is drafts. Draft documents are not official city documents, and therefore they may be discarded. The official documents, when approved by the city council, for example, this general plan, should this be adopted by the city council, would be official city document and that would be provided available to the-
I know what's going there. So thank you. I like your interpretation. So yes, ma'am. So currently, if anything's in draft form, commissioners, when they're done with it, can throw it away, wait for the new document. When we, we haven't seen it, so we just got it. So this is a draft in front of us, too. So whatever changes and lines I have in right now, that's not a disclosurable document because it's a draft.
So just to be clear, a citizen, basically, unless it's a public meeting, we really don't have a way to understand the level of involvement of a particular individual with respect to redlining a draft?
Can I, can I just give an example?
I don't agree with that. Well, hang on one second. I don't agree with that because the fact that you can participate at every level, at every commission, every level, every city council meeting.
I don't, I don't mean it-
No, no, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
But are you asking to see what I may have written in my margins about this book and this and that? No, you won't, because it's a draft.
Right.
And but however, if there's comments that I want to ask that make me real, or it might be a comment in the margin going, "I didn't even," and then I'll look it up. It may not, may not be something I bring up in public, because it reminds me, hey, I need to look that up as an example. And other than changes or suggestions, it's in the public record, it's in a public meeting.
So I've got, I didn't actually use a red pen. I used a blue one.
Right.
But what I do is, on my documents, I just mark them up on the document. And then during the meeting, I will bring those particular items up. Sometimes, something that I've written down will have become moot during the course of the meeting. But if the question is, do I then hand those over to the city clerk for them to keep? No, that doesn't happen.
Right. And what we're trying to determine is the level of involvement of individuals on these various commissions, how much time they're actually putting in.
Oh, we have no way of knowing that. I hear what you're saying.
You'd have to ask them directly.
I'd have to ask each individual, how many hours did you put in?
And that's what we're trying to find out, as far as what work is being done on the drafts. But as has been answered, the drafts are not considered part of the public record. So what we're going on-
Well, even if it was, I mean, how do you ascertain how much time someone spent on it? Because they can say, "Well, I was on it for hours." And maybe it's been sitting on a shelf since the day they gave it to them. So I hear what you're saying. That's why I'm hoping the more public participation comes down, you can challenge the people to see if they've actually read the document, participated in the document. They've had three workshops, specifically, I'm talking about the Planning Commission. That would have given you a good level of idea of how many people would have actually participated. And I'm pretty confident that all seven of them dove into this thing pretty deeply, because that's why I came back three times to the Planning Commission. So I'm confident that they did their due diligence when they went through this thing. I'm confident with their comments and their redlining and their questions, your time, their time representing you as a citizen at that level before it came to us was well represented. That's my personal opinion. You know, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty confident that they spent a lot of time on it before they sent this document to us.
And I'll only add, from the complete geek perspective, I'm-
One to another.
I've actually got, I've got typos and spelling mistakes in here, so that's why staff loves me so much.
Thank you very much.
But thank you for coming down this evening, because we don't get enough people to come down and participate. And I really like your comment that we really, really would. And I've always invited people to come down and talk, because we do better work, whether it be this level or any of the commission levels. Because as one, I think as Barbara said earlier, sometimes we're speaking to ourselves and our staff. And there's a lot of work that we do here. There's a lot of work to Planning Commission, Park Commission, all the commissions do. And more times than not, they're just speaking to staff. So I really appreciate you coming down this evening.
Well, I would just like to put this out there, to have it on the record. There are an awful lot of people in the city who have opinions, one way or another, and they do an awful lot of chatting on Facebook.
Yeah, we know that. Just, you might want to let them know that we actually do know they're on there.
I challenge everybody to come down here-
I agree.
And-
And actually participate in this process.
And I will second that.
If you want to make a change, whatever side you're on, this is how you do it. And if you love those devices, we now know everything's on videotape.
Remember, too, though, just because you-
Smile. You're on TV while you're standing here.
Just because you redlined something-
Yes, you are.
Just because you redlined something doesn't mean we're going to be approved. It's just your comments on what you read. So, you know, sometimes it can be a long distance between your comments and what comes out.
My idea is to, there are many of us fellow nerds and geeks who love to hang on every single word and spelling mistake. So a redline document would just be a fabulous thing to see. However, I'll be happy if we can start to fill a few more of those seats. But it's the summer, so.
And you're one of the more frequent posters on there. Tell them, quit, you know, sitting behind your phone or your tablet or your laptop. Have some guts. Get in the car and come over here. They need the fresh air.
The problem is, there is no anonymity when you stand up here. And so, boy, I just hope my rear end is flattering from the back. I should have worn a tail, but on that note, thank you very much.
What part of the Boston area are you from?
I hope you come more often.
I beg your pardon?
Part of the Boston area are you from?
I grew up, was born, bred, and raised in Quincy, Massachusetts. It is the home of two presidents of the United States, John Adams and John Quincy Adams.
I know.
I was just there. And I became very close friends with the mayor of Braintree, Mass.
Go Red Sox. On that note, I'm going to run before the Yankees fans get on.
There you go. It's always nice to have a little levity in a serious matter. So thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing that we're actually going to close the public hearing process of this, you gentlemen have another five minutes, if you wish, to have some closing discussions, arguments, comments. You're welcome.
I'll keep this short, about 30 seconds or so. Pretty much everything that we felt needed to come across, we did come across. We, thank you for acknowledging, we do spend a lot of time on those books. I literally locked myself away. I don't think the public realizes the extent of the stuff that's in there. And we are up there as representatives for the people. We're not up there for any self-serving agenda or anything else. I literally am up there to represent the people. And I took that serious when I was lucky enough to get that position. Just for the record, I think it should be noted, while I do really like and respect Bob Holderness, he is also an attorney that works for South of 50 Development, Folsom Ranch. So I'd like to have that on record for anybody that may not know that. So of course, he's recommending denying the appeal. But thank you for your time, and I'll leave you with that.
Okay. Kevin?
Nothing to add. I'd simply like to thank you for an open-minded hearing. It's been my policy, philosophy, since I've been on the Planning Commission, that friction polishes. We've had a little here, and I expect the city to be better off for it. Thank you all.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you guys' service. I really do. I mean, it's nice to know that sometimes you have to be challenged. And like anything, and my personal commentary only, you know, not depending on my colleagues unless they want to chime in. But, you know, of 24 years of doing this and all the years of mayor all over the country, you can't possibly always be on top of every little single code and this and that. And my training, and I've been here since day one, and I also want to put for the record, Bob Holderness spent eight years on the city council and three of those years as the mayor. So he has a, he has a personal heart for the city, not just a hired somebody for somebody else. So I think his words are very serious. But to that end, it is disappointing sometimes when, and in this case, I'll say it from the heart, it's disappointing that you guys, in my opinion, didn't have all the proper information that shows all the laws that have trumped, that antiquated in an old municipal code, because I think conversation would have saved you the money you spent on the appeal. And it also tells me that we need to figure out a way to go through the municipal code and see what else possibly is antiquated and has already been trumped by government code and/or the city charter. So that, I certainly appreciate you bringing that forward, because I didn't know that there's an interpretation issue with that. It can be interpreted many different ways. I fell back on the charter because that is the preemptive law of this city. But I appreciate what you're saying. So we'll figure out a way to kind of clean some things up. And so I'll challenge both of you. If you see more, bring them to our attention ahead of time, so we can deal with them. I will also say, and hope that your appointees do the same thing, in the 24 years that I've been on the city council, and of all the appointments I've made at every level, and I think I see some of my commissioners out here, I've never, ever called any of my commissioners and told them what to do or how to do it. I truly believe that all the commissioners are an autonomous body representing another level of the people, and we take your recommendations very seriously. So I don't want you ever leaving here thinking we don't, because we do. More times than not, we go along with what you guys send us, more times than not. We don't have time to do all the weed stuff. That's why we put another layer for the people to participate. And so you guys, again, I will gladly answer any questions you call and ask me, but you'll never have me call you and tell you what to do and how to think. And I think that's why it's been designed, and I think the system's working well.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to serve you and a pleasure to serve the city.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it very much. So with that-
I'll move to deny the appeal.
Unless the city staff needs, wants to add something?
Negative. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So like I said, we closed the appeal hearing. So we have a motion to deny the appeal. Is there a second?
I second it.
Got a motion, a second. Call the roll on the motion.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Miklos?
Yes. Okay, with that, call the next item, please.
Your next item is public hearing, item 9A.
Scott, before you open that, can we just take five? We kind of need to stand up and move around a little bit.
Do you need to heat on?
Because I know this is going to be a long. So ladies and gentlemen, give us, it's what, 8:26? Well, let's call it 8:35. Give you a chance to use the restroom, get some water, and whatever you may need. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting of Folsom City Council. And if the clerk, go ahead and reintroduce the item, please.
Your next item is public hearing, item 9A, the 2035 general plan approval. There are two resolutions to consider tonight, resolution number 10147, a resolution approving the 2035 general plan environmental impact report, findings in fact, and statement of overriding considerations, and resolution number 10148, a resolution approving the 2035 general plan.
Scott, before we launch into something to vice mayor, want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want the consultants to know that they can smile.
They are. You got them.
You may not live here, but you're here for the evening, so enjoy it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Scott Johnson, planning manager. Tonight, for your consideration, is the recommended draft of the 2035 general plan. Over the last 18 months, the plan has been reviewed by several city commissions, including the Planning Commission on three separate occasions. City council also held three public workshops on the draft plan last spring. And all of them received over 400 comments on the draft plan. And staff, city staff and staff from Minter Harnish have worked closely to incorporate the direction provided by the city council from those workshops from last spring. Some of the key concepts in the plan that should be noted consist of a movement towards mixed use on the East Bedwell Street corridor, opportunities for transit-oriented development on the Gold Line, acknowledgement of retail trends that may affect existing shopping centers, emphasis on complete streets, and a focus on healthy lifestyles. The general plan will protect and enhance the city's neighborhoods and guide future growth consistent with the principles and characteristics that make Folsom so desirable. This plan does not propose significant changes to land use patterns. Rather, it seeks to build up existing successes through a cohesive vision. The current general plan is 30 years old and was adopted when just 23,000 residents lived in the city of Folsom. That general plan guided development of large master plan communities such as Empire Ranch, Broadstone, Unit 3, Willow Springs, and the Parkway. The proposed plan will guide future development for those remaining infill sites north of 50, as well as development south of 50, consistent with the Folsom Planer-specific plan. For this process, we did prepare an EIR, which included a series of recommendations to enhance the city's environmental protection. Those recommendations have been incorporated into modified policies to make sure that the plan maximizes the mitigation that's possible. In all, the city received eight comments on the draft EIR. Those comments and our responses are found in the final EIR, which is an attachment to your staff report. Tonight, we're just proposing minor changes to the draft plan. And at this point, Chelsea Payne from Minter Harnish will walk you through those specifics.
Thank you very much, Scott. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Chelsea Payne with Minter Harnish. I've been working as a consultant here in the city since about 2007, and about half that time on this general plan update. So I'm excited to be here tonight, towards the end of this process. We're here for a public hearing to take public testimony on the general plan and to seek action by the city council on certification of the final EIR and adoption of the 2035 general plan. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the plan and the process. Bob Klausner with Planning Partners is going to come up and talk about the environmental impact report, and then I'll walk through the final recommended changes to the public review draft general plan. So I know that you've heard this now many times in all of the meetings where we've been here to present this, but for- this, but for some new members of the audience, the general plan is a basic requirement of state law. Every city and county in California is required to adopt a general plan, and it's sometimes called the city constitution or blueprint, and it's a long-term plan for the development of the community. This general plan looks out to the year 2035. It expresses the community's vision for the future, and contains goals, policies, and implementation actions to achieve that vision. The 2035 General Plan is made up of nine different chapters. Starts with an introduction, and then the next seven chapters are the seven elements of the general plan. That's where the goals and policies are organized by the topics that are shown here. Chapter nine is the implementation chapter, which has all of the implementation programs to implement the general plan. I also wanted to call attention to a new appendix that we included that describes how this general plan serves as a greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategy for the city. We're here in the sixth and final phase of this project. We've been at it now for quite a long time. We kicked off the planning process several years ago with a lot of community input. We held a community workshop. We had an active online forum where we collected comments on a whole range of topics, posted the draft vision and guiding principles for feedback, and had a lot of back and forth with residents. We also sent out an online survey to workers that work at some of the major employers here in Folsom. We prepared a background report that was a snapshot of existing conditions at the time on the whole range of topics addressed in the general plan. And based on the community input that we received, we drafted a vision and guiding principles that we presented back to the community and refined through community input. And then we got to work on drafting the general plan, and in January of 2017, we presented the, we held the City Council meeting to present the draft general plan and then published it, the preliminary draft, and presented that at a series of public meetings in front of the various commissions and the city, City Council. And based on City Council direction to respond to all of the public comments that Scott mentioned, we published several versions of the plan, redlining all of the changes made in response to the comments we've received. And then in, at the July eleventh City Council meeting in 2017, we got direction from the City Council to, based on that draft of the general plan, to initiate the environmental review process. We kicked off the environmental review process with a notice of preparation in August of 2017, held a scoping meeting over at the library, and then in March, March 2018, published the draft EIR. And that, I just wanna clarify, is the thick document that everyone has been holding up. The plan itself is a much thinner, we tried to make it an accessible, accessible read and accessible document. But there was a forty-five day public comment period on that draft EIR that ran until April twentieth. During the comment period, we held a, a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission to present the revised draft plan, the public review draft plan, and the draft EIR. We collected public comments during that period, responded to all of those comments, and have responded to those in the final EIR, which was published on May twenty-fifth. So then we presented the final EIR and final draft general plan to the Planning Commission on June sixth, and we're here tonight with the City Council. I'm gonna ask Bob Klausner to come up and talk about the approach to the EIR on this project.
Thanks, Chelsea. Bob Klausner, Principal of Planning Partners. Good evening, Mayor Miklos and the council members. First off, I just wanna apologize for the large number of, amount of documents that I prepared for you. I was compelled to do that by state law, but still, nonetheless. Anyway, what I wanna do is talk a little bit about what kind of an EIR it is, because it's a bit unusual even for you who've seen a lot. It's a program EIR based on evaluating the proposed land uses in the new general plan and its policies. And in this case, there are very few changes in the land uses, as Scott has described. So really, our intent was to look at the policies and any new overlay districts, such as the mixed-use district that were proposed in the general plan. So we examined the broad goal and policy objectives, the programmatic impacts, and then programmatic mitigation measures, which in many cases were also either new policies or variations of existing proposed policies. Because we're operating at like a thirty-thousand-foot altitude here, nobody can look at their particular parcel of land and see what environmental effects would occur there from the implementation of the general plan. We're just looking citywide. And in this case, most of the new development that we would, that we evaluated in the EIR is south of Highway fifty. In fact, it's almost eighty percent of the new development that will occur in the city occurs there. So much of the impact analysis focused on projects south of Highway fifty. The council recently, within the relatively recent past, made a, a series of environmental conclusions through the south of Highway, the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan environmental documents. And we incorporated many of those previous conclusions of the council into this program EIR. We didn't adopt any mitigation measure, re-adopt any mitigation measures from that document, but we took the mitigation measures that you previously had adopted, and together with existing city codes, standard construction specifications, and things of that nature, looked at how that body of law would mitigate potential environmental effects, and where there was an impact even after the imposition of all that. That's when we stepped in to identify additional mitigation measures. So implementation of the general plan EIR and the general plan will have no effect on your previous approvals in the, in the Folsom Plan Area. Just wanna make that clear, there had been some concern earlier that we were changing things, but that's not the case. We went through and did a, a full environmental analysis of all the environmental topics required by the state and city guidelines. You can see here, I won't go through in any detail of the impacts that were looked at. Like Chelsea said, we had a forty-five day comment period. We received nine impacts, many from regional and state agencies. Impacts are the comments received on the CIR, given the magnitude of the document and the magnitude of the city's plans, we felt were very manageable and less than we might have expected. So I think there was indication pretty much from reviewers of the EIR and the general plan that the city had done a pretty good job. If you're interested, all of the environmental-related comments are responded to in the final EIR in chapter three. General plan-related comments, where some people made comments about policy or recommendations for policy, they're in a separate document outside of the SEQA process and addressed in attachment four of the staff report. Several of the impacts that were identified in the EIR were, were characterized as being significant and unavoidable, meaning that even after the implementation of mitigation measures, they would still be significant. For those impacts, there's a process in SEQA that will allow you to approve the general plan as long as you set forth those social and economic factors that in your minds as council members outweigh the potential environmental effects, and those are reflected in a statement of overriding considerations that is part of your package and part of the approval motion that's being recommended to you tonight. Additionally, you have to adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program to ensure that the mitigation measures that you adopt are actually implemented. In the case of a general plan, many of the mitigation measures in fact will be implemented when you adopt the general plans, and say were changes in policy or additional policy that are part of the general plan now. So just by the mere action of your approving the general plan, you'll implement many of the mitigation measures. That concludes my presentation on the EIR. If you have any questions, I'd be answered, happy to answer.
Any questions while he's here on the EIR?
If not, I'll turn it back over to Chelsea.
All right, thank you, Bob. So just to wrap up our presentation, I'm gonna walk through the final recommended changes based on the comments we received from the public during the comment period on the EIR. There were, in all, eight, eight categories of changes, or eight changes that staff is recommending, fairly minor. I'm gonna just show you the wordsmithing on these policies. There was a, a comment from SECOG that, that they felt the general plan was a little unclear on whether or not it would supersede the specific plan for the Folsom Plan Area. And we just wanted to clarify, as we've said, the general plan has been prepared to be consistent with the specific plan, but all specific plans, including the Plan Area Specific Plan, have to be consistent with the general plan. We received five comments from the air dist, or several comments from the air district, recommending some policy changes to better address resiliency in the general plan, and staff has reviewed all the recommendations and is recommending changes to five policies. The first change is in the land use element, to add that the city will collaborate with upstream neighboring and regional groups on the issues that are shown here, air quality, food availability, energy. And then we've also added to the list adaptation.
I have one, this might be a weird question. I'm wondering whether this comes from AQMD. What is the issue of food availability?
Well-
Access to grocery stores, or?
Food availability was not a recommend, the changes that are shown here were the recommendations from the air district. The rest of the language was the existing policy. And I, what this was trying to say, resiliency, that there may be issues in the future around food availability within the region. It's, it's not, it's not an issue that's affecting Folsom necessarily, but it's, it's just generally a list of issues, on the list of resiliency issues that you might look at if you're working on a, a regional scale.
I get resiliency, but I don't get the inclusion of food availability.
The second recommended change is to a policy in the safety element, to add backup escape routes to the list of issues that would be addressed in the emergency operations plan. There's a recommended change in the mobility element, to add that the pavement management plan will consider warmer temperatures, heat waves, and the urban island, urban heat island effect in the material selection.
I had one more question about that, and I've got it marked up somewhere in here, but there's a comment or a change that discusses the issue of the use of alternative pavement-type materials, and the, and the way that it's written, it suggests that asphalt is impermeable. Asphalt is not impermeable. So when we get to that, or even if you guys could search the document for that word, 'cause it is, it is, it's less permeable than, than concrete, but not by much.
Okay, we'll, we'll look for that.
Okay.
The, the third change on resiliency is to a policy in the public facilities element, and we've added that the city will develop and maintain its facilities, facilities that are resilient to future extreme weather events. In the parks and recreation, this is the last change related to resiliency. The comment was to add that the city will provide not only for shade, but also water fountains in the city's parks. And then the suggestion was to also add playgrounds, bike paths, trails, active transportation corridors where feasible. The third comment was that the city should include more examples of auto-oriented uses that would be restricted within a quarter mile of light rail stations. This was a policy recommended originally by SECOG to, in, in implementing transit-oriented development policies within the region, to place some restrictions on new auto-oriented, placing new auto-oriented uses around light rail stations. And SECOG suggested some additional examples for this policy.
On this one, I get the drive-through restaurants, if they're drive-through only. The mini-storage facilities I don't get, because transit-oriented development tends to be higher density, smaller units, and people that are downsizing may not wanna have the big yard sale and might actually wanna store their stuff. So I'm not quite sure I get the connection there.
I think the idea is to maximize the, the land around light rail stations to promote more density, so you're supporting ridership. So I think that's where the, they suggested this as, and it's not necessarily an auto-oriented use, and you're right that those higher density might need storage. This might be the comment that you were talking about related to permeable pavement. There was a comment to consider expanding this policy in the land use element to include permeable pavement, which can reduce stormwater runoff and sequester rainfall. But I see what you're saying. It says instead of asphalt, the use of concrete instead of asphalt.
Yeah, I, you know, I wouldn't wanna see a, a trend where people were suggesting that small residential streets and neighborhoods would have to be made of concrete as opposed to asphalt.
Yeah, maybe we can.
It's also significantly more expensive.
Okay, we can flag this policy. The fifth of the eight changes, there was a comment that the city should promote electric vehicle charging infrastructure at multifamily residential units. So we've added to this electric vehicle policy about encouraging electric vehicles that the city would prioritize installations at multifamily residential units. There was a comment from the air district requesting some clarification on this policy in the natural and cultural resources element. The policy is about coordinating with the air district to ensure that projects incorporate mitigation measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution, and they wanted to clarify that it's from both the construction and the operations of those projects. So that's the clarification added here. The, the seventh recommended change here is based, is from a comment that the mixed-use overlay included areas that are designated for open space in the general plan, and the intent was never to develop these areas as open space. So we've, we've recommended modifying the boundary of the mixed-use overlay to remove those areas of open space that had been included. And the mixed-use overlay is a, an overlay designation that would promote mixed use along the East Bidwell Corridor. And then the last staff recommended change is related to the River District area. In the previous draft of the general plan, the River District had been included on the land use diagram and called a River District overlay, but in, in, working on the EIR and examining this issue, we realized that was not the most appropriate use of the term overlay. That implied that there was some sort of use or a land use designation related to it, where it's really just a boundary for a study area for a follow-up plan to be prepared. So staff has recommended removing it from the land use diagram, and instead including a map in the River District Policy section of the land use element that just shows the boundaries of that study area. So that's a summary of the final recommended changes to, that are included as an errata to the final draft general plan, and that concludes our presentation tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions while we have her here? Okay.
I got a couple before you bring the public up. And I'm looking at the staff report, page five of five thirty-nine, and it's in the mobility policy. There's a change to four point one point two on roadway maintenance. There's a, an extra word in there that considers for warmer temperatures. It should just say considers warmer temperatures.
What page is that carrying?
It's staff, it's five of five thirty-nine in the staff report. Then on page nine of five thirty-nine, fifth paragraph down, staff recommends that the City Council incorporate by reference and adopt instead of as its own, on its own. That's it for now.
Yeah, I, I've got one question on the last item that you presented in the River District. You gotta change it back into the previous one rather than have it by stand alone. I don't want that to be anywhere indicated that that's a foregone conclusion upon completion of the study, 'cause that is a significant change in this town of anything proposed yet, and I don't think it deserves maybe even a vote of the people to implement that study if and when it's done. I, I don't want that, 'cause, you know, my best friend was one of the three people that advocated that district, and three of, of a major- And three of a major impact on the city as I see it. I'm not sure that qualifies to have a stand-alone. I'm glad to see you moved it out of there. But I still want some clarification, that somebody's not coming back in five years, or two years, or one year, and say, well, it's in the general plan, we got to go ahead. No, I'm not buying that at all.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this might be more appropriate for staff to answer this one than the, than the consulting team. But I think what Ms. Payne is indicating to Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Sheldon, is exactly what you're indicating. And that is, there might have been some conclusion drawn from members of the public, based on the fact that it was being referenced as an overlay before, that there might have been some conclusions made relative to land uses in that area. And by moving it just to a study area, it, it should remove that ambiguity, or those conclusions can be drawn. Because literally, it gives the council the ability to study this in the future, in a defined boundary that's covered in the general plan, or not. There's not even a preconceived conclusion that you would study it in the future. It just puts forward a boundary that has been spoken about in the community. We do know that there's community members out there that are talking about this. And so what we're attempting to do is, is create a vernacular within which that can be discussed, or not.
City manager, would you, would you say the same thing for that southern area past Grantline Road with the study area?
The, the study areas, it...
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. That, that previously had also been called a study area, but that's even less so of a study area.
Right.
So we, we've removed that reference. It was just a, it really was an inappropriate description of that area. It was meant to say, this is just within the, there are potential impacts in this area. It bears relation to the planning for the city of Folsom. And it should be included in the, in a, in the planning area for the general plan, per the state definition of what a planning area is. So the, the term future study area was not appropriate for that area, and that's why we removed it.
Correct.
Okay, I got a couple more, if you guys are done for now.
I just had, oh, I can go after you.
Okay, on, this is page 33 of 539. Item eight is brand Folsom as the gateway to the Foothill Wine Region. We already have branding, and I don't know that I want to be branded as the gateway to our friends in El Dorado County. Much as I love our friends in El Dorado County...
Actually, kind of disagree.
And then on 52 of 539, there's a couple of locations in here where we go back and forth between 100-year floodplain and 200-year floodplain. I think the federal requirement is 100-year. I don't know where the 200-year came from. But we need to pick one and be consistent. And then on 69 of 539, under mitigation measure T3, in paragraph one, bottom of the second line, shift in traffic volumes from the east, it should, the word "the" should be in there, East Bidwell Street interchange to the new interchanges. Okay, I'm done until I find some more.
Roger, you had a couple?
A statement on the first proposed change on the land use diagram and standards, referring the specific plan, specific plan to the, to the general plan. Is that relating as well as with traffic as well? Like, all standards within the general plan?
All, all standards. It is, yes, the, the general plan's been prepared to be consistent with the specific plan. And specific plans are to be consistent with the general plan on, on all policies and standards. The section that we made that edit in is in the land use element, talking about land use standards, which is why it's, it's only specific to land use standards in that context.
Do you have another one? We keep looking.
I have a lot of questions.
No, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Anybody else, while she's still here? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. So the considered public hearing is now open. We do have some requests to speak, so the city clerk, we call those off.
We do have four requests to speak this evening. Your first request is from Erin Rawls, and your second request is from Deborah Grassel.
Here we go again. So I, I just wanted to bring to your attention, one of the, the items that came before us during the Planning Commission was degrading our current level of service regarding traffic. We're currently supposed to be operating in a service level of C. And this new plan is going to make D our new accepted norm. And areas where we're already in Es and Fs will then further degrade to Fs. It's going to make it a lot more difficult for our first responder, first responders, as well as just generally getting around town. It's going to be really bad for a large number of years until the improvements are made. And from my understanding, the improvements aren't going to be made till around the year 2035, that we'll be able to ease the congestion that's going to be created as a result of, of adoption of this new general plan. So that's all I have.
Mayor, a quick question for you. So as the communities get built out down there, you know they're required to put their infrastructure in it...
Yes.
Before they can put the sticks and bricks up.
Yes, and, and one thing that, that really concerns me with that mindset is the 1989, I believe is the specific plan then, or the general plan then?
Eighty-eight, yeah.
Eighty-eight. Has our level of service under C, which is what we're supposed to be operating in under all the way to this time. We've already degraded past that. And infrastructure improvements that were suggested in 1988, to this day, still have not been done. Matter of fact, that money that was for our infrastructure improvements got relocated to build the new bridge, according to city staff, when it, which it was needed at, at the time.
That statement was entirely erroneous, and the former city manager is sitting in the room, and I'm sure she would come up if we asked her to. I know you were told that. It's not true.
Oh, okay. Look, what I was told, that's what I was told. That that money got sent there.
I was very upset when I heard that, and I know that the former city manager was very upset.
Mitigation monies from development can only be used where the mitigation is required. So it would not be shifted to somebody else, or someplace else.
Okay, well then, at the end of the day, what was supposed to have happened then still hasn't happened in some of the areas that they had called for in 1988. That's the only thing that concerns me, concerns me with the new general plan, is that we have all this revenue coming in, and the improvements are going to be made, but they don't quite ever get made, and traffic is already getting...
I don't necessarily disagree with you, because, again, not being here the whole time, when all those things are supposed to be implemented, you know, kind of case in point, you know, if, if like, the Parkway, as an example, was responsible for widening Blue Ravine to four lanes, it took them almost to their final phase before they actually did their requirement, if you will. So I don't, I can't speak to one before I was here, and some of those, so I, I appreciate where you're coming from on that one. And, you know, a, as I share with people, I said, there's, you, you don't want to leave the impression of the public that level of service, whether it be C, D, E, F, G, B, whatever, is all the time. As you know, as a planning commissioner, level of service, you have to assign a letter based on the absolute worst condition it could be, which, as you know, as well as I do, is always commute time. There's that time in the morning.
Sure.
There's that time in the evening. And I know you know that. And so, though we're all not happy, we'll speak offline, whether it's a better system than what's coming down the line, from the air board is being one of them, and a couple other things. So the, the planning is trying to reach out and say, what could be absolute worst-case scenario? I'm not saying we accept that as a level. And quite frankly, I can tell you, as, as somebody that's been up here for a long time, to the extent possible, we don't accept that. But I know what the consultants are saying, is be aware of that if you don't do X, Y, and Z. So I agree with you on that comment, that we're not going to accept that. And to the extent possible, we make sure we don't have that. And that's why all the rest of the infrastructure is very important to be, to be built sooner than later. I, I agree with you on that 100%.
To Erin's point also, and I agree with what you said, but it doesn't say in here that, at least from what I'm reading, it, and that's why I asked the question about the specific plan with South of 50, because it goes even further than this general plan, to Es over there, versus comparative to the C currently in the eighty-eight, and then Ds and Fs going into this general plan. So we're not saying this is what it could be. We're saying this is what we're expecting. And then it says it could, it could get a little better if the interchanges come in on, on Oak Avenue and, and Empire Ranch on 1752. But, I mean, that, it, it concerns me greatly. And that's, that's one of the biggest issues I have with this, because I agree, there's been a lot of work with it, and I appreciate the consultants. And I, and I appreciate, you know, Erin coming up and testifying and seeing this as a planning commissioner, and as a resident, like most do. So, but this whole section just, it's, it kind of scares me, and it scares a lot of residents.
No, it should scare everybody, because unfortunately, the truth and reality of everything is, and it's, it's stated quite well in Secog document for the last 15 years, there are almost 3 million people moving here, when that document came out 10, 10 years ago, between then and 2030. So whether we like it or not, they're going to come here. We're fortunate as a city to over-design better than most every community that's near us, around us, or it ever be popping-ups up around this, this region. So unfortunately, sometimes there's reality of, it's going to happen, so how can we plan for it? That's why we, you know, we've been working on a connector for over 20 years, because that'll relieve a lot. The Empire Ranch, Oak Avenue, Roeberry, all those, again, we've been working on it for a very long time. So yeah, it does take a while to catch up. Reality is, however, sometimes you just can't stop people from coming. And our job is to try to limit the, the amount of congestion during those peak hours, where you can't move around town. Our job is also to limit the congestion, so you can, other than commute, because there's, there's very little you can do about that. It's one of those, it's one of those good-bad things. You've got a great community, people come here, but when people are here, then you have the issues that come with it. So I take your comment very much to heart, because I think the majority of sitting up here are on the same page.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I, I just want to make one clarification. In addition to the former city manager that might want to clarify a couple of points, your current one does too. And that is relative to transportation improvements. We have certainly not, not done transportation improvements. And in fact, I'll just point out too, that we all know very well, and that's the Lake Natoma Crossing and the Folsom Lake Crossing, that have both been constructed during my term here, both using transportation mitigation funds in some respect or another, along with funds from the state and federal government, that this city council and staff worked on, worked on very, very hard to do. And, and I can't recollect another river crossing in this region that was done by any other community, in order to solve what is a, a major contributor to the level of service in this community. And that is not traffic that's oriented or destined, or, 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 or destined from within this community, but traffic that passes through this community. And that is why we suffer level of service problems at our borders, which is largely what we're talking about here, particularly relative to our southern border along Highway 50, because everybody from Placer County and El Dorado County is trying to get to the freeway. Many of the fast paths, fastest paths run through Folsom, because we have, in fact, done a good job of taking our transportation dollars and building transportation improvements that everybody loves to use. And so I just don't, I, I couldn't let it hang out in the air that we have not been constructing transportation improvements. This town is full of them, full of very expensive ones. $125 million, as I recall, to the near penny for the crossing over Folsom Lake, constructed from concept to ribbon-cutting in seven years.
Predominantly with federal funds.
And so, I don't know that anybody does transportation improvements better than we do, and I just wanted to, to throw that out for you.
And I think his point is well-taken, it's just we have to be very cognizant of the level of service, of what we can control. I mean, we put light rail in here to try to get people out of their cars from cutting through here, so that helped.
Right.
I, I don't disagree with your comment, Erin.
And with the general plan, the way it's written, it will, it will make D our new accepted level of service.
And it might have to be, given the fact that, you know, one of the things when you look at a general plan, is that you don't just look at a vacuum within just the borders of Folsom, you look at all the impacts that are surrounding us as well. And like the manager just pointed out, the biggest impact we have in the entire city with traffic is the 62% cut-through traffic we have every morning, every afternoon. So I think that's where they're coming from.
Absolutely.
But, and I agree with you, that's why we're sitting back and going, okay, how do we deal with it? Three interchanges, a light rail extension, bus rapid transit system, and of course, the connector Parkway. So those are the things that we can control, but we still can't control everybody else moving around us and passing it. Geographically, we're in a horrible bowl, you know, between the 80 corridor and 50 corridor. I mean, it's used, when you sit out on any of those things, I think we're up to almost 30,000 cars a day going across just, you know, Folsom Lake Crossing right now. Could be even more, I'm sure Dave's got numbers on it, so. But your concern is very well-taken, Erin, and I appreciate it very much, because it's ours as well.
And I just want to add a couple more things. Erin, you don't need to stand there.
Hey, take a break.
And, and I want Mark, predominantly Mark and Dave too, if you have any comments, to correct me if I'm wrong. There's been a lot of stuff that's been discussed on social media, there's been commentary here, I have people asking me about it. Level of service is something that I understand. I'm a licensed civil engineer. My original focus in college was actually transportation engineering. And what I want everybody sitting in this room, and everybody in the city of Folsom to understand, is the levels of service that we're talking about, that are in this document that we're discussing right now, are for the peak hour in the morning, and the peak hour in the afternoon. It is very, very seldom anywhere in Folsom that you will experience anything lower than a level B the other 22 hours a day. And those level of services, levels of service are based on the delay that is at, over and above the normal traffic situation. As an example, if you're driving down East Bidwell, and you have to stop at a light because somebody else is turning left, that's not a delay. If you have to sit through that light twice, because 5 million people are turning left, and you can't get through the intersection or the traffic's backed up, all, the only thing that contributes to that decrease in the level of service is the delay, not the fact that you have to stop at a light. So the streets in the city of Folsom were not designed to travel 65 miles an hour. Every, there's a speed limit everywhere, and it's not 65 miles an hour anywhere. I have gotten into the, into the habit of timing how long it takes me to get from my house off Willow Creek near Ed Mitchell Park to Costco, if I want to get gas, driving the speed limit. And this, the last time I checked it, it was 4:45 in the afternoon, in the middle of the week. I got to my house, to Costco, into the gas line at Costco, that's where my time was wasted. But it only took me eight minutes to get there. So all of the people that are talking about this whole level of service thing, it's one hour in the morning, and one hour in the afternoon. So the best way to avoid being stuck in a level of service, D, E, or F, is go to work early, come home later, adjust your schedule, but, you know, or find another route to get to the freeway. You can get on the freeway at Prairie City, you don't have to get on at East Bidwell. You know, and one of the things that we're going to do is put up some more informational signs to direct people that that's not the only way to get onto Highway 50, nor is, is Folsom Boulevard. And to add to that, because of the additional funding that RT's gotten, the other thing that will happen sooner rather than later, is that the city is working with RT to get the signals replaced along Folsom Boulevard. Everybody complains about how many times they have to sit through the light, or they can't turn right to go to the factory outlets, or Natoma Station, wherever. That's not our fault. The city of Folsom does not have control over those signals. The equipment, despite the fact that light rail seems relatively new, it's antiquated equipment that's got to be replaced. Ballpark cost for every signalized intersection is $250,000 and north. So RT's working with the city, so that they can do that in the short term, and that will eliminate a lot of the problems there. But please leave this meeting and tell your neighbors, we're really sorry if you're unhappy for an hour in the morning, or an hour in the afternoon, but there's not a lot to complain about the rest of the day. And if we didn't have some of the traffic volumes that we have, we wouldn't have Palladio, wouldn't have In-N-Out, wouldn't have Frank Fats, wouldn't have a lot of the amenities that have come to this city over the course of the last 20 years that didn't use to be here. East Bidwell basically was Scott Road from Blue Ravine out to the freeway. And I remember, and many of the people in this room, remember when there was nothing out there but tumbleweeds. Well, there's commerce out there, and jobs, and income to the city out there, and I for one am happy for it. So I'm not going to complain about decreased levels of service for an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon.
I think you underestimate the traffic in this city, because, and, and in fact, what I'd like to do is actually provide the council, we, we've been running real-time analytics via Google Maps through New Folsom. And, and again, 22 hours is kind of a, it's, it's not really a logical representation, because obviously, from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, everyone's asleep, we're not on the road, so it's not, obviously not going to be an issue. But from those other peak times, it's not limited to certain intersections for certain hours, because we can prove that wrong. So I don't know if there's, there's discussion within the general plan on, you know, upgrading or some analytics within our lighting systems, or doing any kind of technological upgrades to help mitigate those facts, that would, that would be okay with some of these levels, because then we wouldn't be hitting these. But, but setting the standard here, and then saying, we don't have a traffic problem in the city, I just, it doesn't bode well, because I can prove it wrong.
Well, you would have, you would have to understand what constitutes the data, and how the levels of service are calculated. It may not meet with your approval, but there's very definite engineering ways of analyzing this data. And you need to...
I don't think you're wrong, and I'm not debating you on that piece. I know there, there's specific, you know, how they measure it, but I think that you're underestimating the traffic in general, the situation that this city has.
Thank you for sharing, but I, I work out of my home, so I'm in Folsom, unless I'm out of town. I'm here 90% of the time. I do all of my business, most of my, all of my purchasing in Folsom, as my friends will attest. And I go to the post office, and out to lunch, and to meetings and stuff, and I'm driving around Folsom all day. So we must, we're having a different experience.
Any more comments, otherwise we'll call up the next speaker.
Any more comments, otherwise we'll call up the next speaker.
Good. Thank you, Aaron. And I'm sorry, Aaron, were you done? I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure if you were done. Just dawned on me, we were just grilling-
One more, just since, since Kerry brought up the issue of running to get gas, the thing that really brought it to my attention was a few months ago, parked in front of Hanley's Western where my dentist is around the corner by Sutter Middle School. It was about 3:30 to 3:40 in the afternoon. It took me 22 minutes to go less than a quarter mile.
Well, you hit the school let-out time. I know because my, my office around the corner, I hit it too.
But still, 22 minutes right there to-
And that's why I don't go down Blue Ravine when, because I'm closer to Folsom Middle. I don't go in that part of the-
I have three kids and we do sports and everything, so it changes.
We're redesigning an entire intersection right there to help a lot of those issues you just talked about. Yeah, and I know, because when I leave my office, as you know, it's around the corner from there, I know exactly when that school lets out, and I go a different direction if I have to go out because I don't want to get in what you just said. Yeah. And there are unfortunately some crazy parents out there too. I'm surprised some of those kids don't get hit more often by the parents there to pick them up. So I hear you. Okay, call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Deborah Grassel, and Deborah will be followed by Will Kempton.
Hi, Deborah.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm Deborah Grassel. I live at 1340 Jungwo Circle, Folsom, 25-year resident, and have been reviewing the general plan and the program environmental impact report. I wrote you a letter, and in the letter I highlighted five things that I felt that really needed to be taken a look at in the general plan. But right now, tonight, I'm going to kind of change the conversation, and let's talk about cultural resources and, and historical resources. In the general plan, there is a section that is supposed to encapsulate both cultural and historical resources called cultural resources. And this section has a goal and has six objectives. The goal and four of those objectives are right out of the 1988 general plan, and there are two new, new objectives that are in that section. But the whole section, really, I was hoping to have a more sophisticated representation of what our city is supposed to be doing and wants to do in regard to preserving, conserving our culture and our history. The wording in the objectives are, are, are really pretty nebulous. We've got some words like "when feasible," strive to obtain, funding for maintaining and rehabilitating, encourage preservation and restoration and maintenance of. We need to have more action verbs in regard to what it is we actually plan to do because the historic district is going to be inundated in the next 20 to 30 years with urban infill. All kinds of construction is going, development is going to happen, and we need to have a better plan in the historic district, and we need to have some laws in place, and we also need to respect some of the environmental law that's already been written that needs to be incorporated into our general plan. So my emphasis this, this evening, we've talked about traffic, this is something that was a problem for me too in regard to the general plan, the statement of overriding considerations being in conflict with the general plan and its policies, the fact that the housing element of the general plan was not circulated at the same time that the other six mandatory elements were being updated. So there was no way for public input, public participation in regard to whether or not they were fully integrated into the other elements. And I believe that, that by law, they're supposed to be integrated, but how could we see that if the housing element was not circulated at all with all of the, the drafts? We've talked about environmental justice has been brought up before in regard to the mandatory element. It seems that the city is, city staff is most concerned that the environmental justice element that wasn't in the general plan has to do with, only with a highly toxic or a poisoning, poisonous environment. It doesn't. It has to do with food scarcity, has to do with lack of being able to participate civically, not being contacted, has to do with identifying older people, elderly people, people who are disabled, people who, children who are younger who can't speak for themselves. So we have plenty of disadvantaged communities in our community, and we need that environmental justice statement, I believe, in the general plan. So together with all these things, I'm really hoping that you will reconsider approving tonight the general plan, that you will allow us a, a larger platform to get together again still with the planning commission or, or the city council, with staff, and hammer some of these things out. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Good points, Deborah. Thank you.
Your next speaker is Will Kempton, and Will will be followed by Terry Sorensen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Will Kempton with the Greater Folsom Partnership. Before I get to my comments, I wanted to ask one question on the changes made to the River District. I understand the issue of backing away from an overlay, but I just wanted to confirm that the boundaries remain unchanged.
Let the record show the nod was the boundary-
Affirmative action.
Same.
Well, I'm, I hope that the quality of this document was not lost in previous discussion because the partnership supports the, the final draft of the Folsom 2035 general plan. We think the major trends are really forward-looking that are raised in the document, housing, mobility, the changing face of employment in our state and in the region, and the, the greater emphasis on healthy lifestyle choices. The vision statement is, is very comprehensive. It outlines a community that is vibrant and sustainable, that is livable, walkable, with many amenities, that maintains a small-town feel, celebrates our rich history and heritage, that is healthy, safe, and cohesive, and that recognizes the importance of innovative, of an innovative and creative workforce, has an excellent school system, and continues the emphasis on a premier recreational and tourist destination. The guiding principles likewise are meaningful, and the policies make a lot of sense to us. Maintaining an overall quality of life in a family-friendly city with a small-town feel, fostering diverse economic growth, supporting business attraction and retention, and our retail base, providing residents with opportunities to live an active, healthy lifestyle, continuing to be a premier recreation destination, providing for a range of transportation and housing options, which is extremely important, embracing Folsom's heritage and cultural diversity, encouraging citizen participation, and integrating the old and new areas of the city. All of these are, issues are important to a healthy business climate, to continuing economic development, and to our tourism industry. And we also agree with goal LU 5.1, which is the goal of appropriate enhancement of Folsom's riverfront areas, and the preparation of a River District master plan for Folsom's riverfront area, one that is based on widespread community involvement as well as coordination with state and federal agencies. And we would like to see that plan prepared sooner as opposed to later. In summary, this general plan proposal fits our city well, and we encourage the council to approve the document, dare I say, as soon as practicable. See you all at the Folsom Pro Rodeo.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Terry Sorensen, and Terry will be followed by Justin Rathel.
Thank you very much. My name's Terry Sorensen, and I've been a resident of the city of Folsom for, since 2005, I believe. Try to be brief. I think, it's not at the time yet.
Oh, once you get started, we're gonna hit it.
Okay, thank you. Let me get rolling. Okay. Two points I'd just like to raise here, and hopefully I can do it in three minutes. The first is that, based on my evaluation of what I've seen about the, the general plan and the type of environmental impact report used to provide the, the environmental support for the plan, is that I think that the, the, the plan uses the program environmental impact report, or PEIR. I feel that that use of that type of environmental impact report is improper and has the effect of unduly limiting public input and public participation in the CEQA project approval process. I've raised this in one letter to the city council dated June 4, and another dated, dated June 22 of both of this year. I trust you have had a chance to review. I don't want to, it gets sort of funky and wonky going through all the details of, of what the difference is between a program environmental impact report and a master environmental impact report. This is, this is one of the alternatives that could have been used, but one really unduly limits public input when you, when you examine upcoming projects, while the other provides far greater public input. Okay. In closing, I would just like to make this comment. I think the issues raised by the proposed general plan and the related environmental impact report are complex, and in my opinion, do not lend themselves to full and complete analysis by way of brief written submissions such as I've had, or a three-minute talk. They're just too complex. The proposed 2035 general plan are very serious matters inasmuch as they will control the land use and development in the city for at least the next 17 years. From my analysis of the situation, I feel that while the citizens of Folsom might well differ as to the ultimate ends of development that they would like to see in this city, that where the people are of one mind is that they would like to have the opportunity for continued input on the development projects as they arise. I think the way the environmental impact report method we're using here, I think deprives the population of that, of that opportunity. Okay. If I could be so bold, and I guess I will be bold, what I would propose is the city retains the services of a neutral, independent legal expert to review and provide an analysis of the plan and the EIR, both as to their legal adequacy and anticipated probable effects on development in the city. Such a review and analysis most surely would not come cheaply, and it's going to set things back. I understand that. But we're looking at something that's going to be for the next 20 years, basically. This document will control development in the city. And I feel that if the 2035 general plan is to adequately fulfill its role as the city's, quotes, "constitution for future development," close quotes, that's, there's some case law, I think, that says that, and I've heard the term bandied tonight in some of the language that's been used. The public deserves the benefit of a thoughtful and independent analysis and vetting of the plan before it is adopted by the council. I'll close on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let the record show, I gave you 56 extra seconds.
Oh, thank you.
A little humor for the evening. No, I, I appreciate your comments, that's why I was not going to stop you. You were, you were on a roll, I wanted to hear the rest of your thoughts, so thank you.
Justin Rathel, 106 Covell Court. You guys have already received the recommendation from the planning commission, so I'm not here to tell you what that is tonight, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for the amount of public input that went into this process. Been involved from the resident side at the very beginning, got to submit my comments online, as I know many of my friends did also, which was a, a pretty cool way that probably wouldn't have happened in 1988, so I, I liked that part.
That was before Gore invented the internet.
Got it. So I, I love having people that are still around and involved in, in our city government that were around for that last general plan. And just to let you guys know, we have to start on the next one in, in just 10 years, right? If it's a seven-year process, so it's not that far away, we're going to have to start on the next one. But I just have to commend staff and the commissions out there for taking the public input that was given. I feel like it was a very responsive process. I'd never been through it before, and so that was my experience of it, is, is that, you know, words were changed, ideas were changed, sections were added, sections were taken away, and it was a very responsive process. And I think our consultant was responsive, and our staff was extremely responsive. So I'd just like to commend you guys on a well-run, seven-year process, and I thank you for allowing me to participate.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Okay, this is a public hearing. I don't have any more written requests. Anybody want to say their comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing them, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll start with council questions, comments, deliberations.
I'll, I'll start. I'd like to, I'd like to have the opportunity, well, first of all, I'd like to move that we don't approve this until all five of us are sitting here, and I understand that's not going to happen until the end of July, because Andy's out of town, I'm going to be out of town for the next meeting, and I think this is a significant document, and all five of us need to be here. But I would also like to allow additional public input at that next discussion, if there's people that have additional comments that want to come back in, without necessarily having to have another presentation by the, by the consultants.
Okay.
That's second.
Okay. Most, I, I have to agree with that, and I know the vice mayor has some comments as well. You know, this, this, and then, you know, Terry just kind of said, I think everybody did, but more importantly, this city council made a promise in January of 17, that when the document that was recommended to us by the planning commission gets to us, it was not going to be a one-and-done meeting. I mean, this is just, and I'll, I'll be the kind, this is the EIR that we still have to go through, you still have the, you know, the program side of everything. You know, we've gotten some testimony this evening, we still have letters in here that I'd like to, you know, digest and go over. I know Deborah, Deborah made some very good points. In fact, what I would reach out and request from everybody that's either sitting here or watching it, or whatever, please send as many comments to you in advance as that you can, because more times than not, unfortunately, people present letters to us at the dais or the afternoon before we even get here, we don't have time to read them. Because if I'm reading your letter in front of you, I'm not paying attention to the guy that's talking at the same time. So I encourage people, please get your comments, questions, whatever, let's just keep the dialogue going, and if I need to reopen a public hearing for additional input, if that's requested of the council, we'll certainly do that. Officially, we have closed the public hearing, but again, we can always reopen it, so I don't want you to think that, that that's been cut off.
And I'd just like to add that it's more helpful to me, and I suspect to my colleagues, and I'm sure to staff and the consultants, if the comments are more specific rather than the 70,000-foot level, it, it's not helpful if you're submitting comments from the 70,000-foot level only because you don't want us to do anything.
That's, that's a good point. In fact, I, I know a couple of comments made, and I said, you know, I'd like to hear specifically what's on your mind. In fact, I do have a question, if I may, and I'm not sure who can answer this question. One comment was made that the housing element wasn't circulated along the same time with some of the other six elements, so can someone speak to that? I'd like to get something on the record of making sure we follow the procedures.
So the housing element is valid until 2021. We received an eight-year approval on that document, and so legally does not need to be updated until that time.
That's the last one we just did.
And, and that's, it's unfortunate, perhaps on purpose, perhaps not, it's just that the state has a different guideline for the housing element than it does for the general plan.
So the point, so then I think what we probably-
I'd like to say they did it on purpose so we didn't have to do it all at one time, but I doubt that's true.
So what we do is just maybe, maybe put something out to the public in the website or whatever that we're going to be, again, taking this up again, but maybe put it out there if they want to look at the housing element, remind them where they can find the current housing element, and that current housing element is still valid until we have to do the next one, because they don't run concurrently. Just something to reach out, so they, so they know that we've paid attention to it because it's, it's something we approved and we're bound by it.
And one other note, just wanted to mention, the Minter Harnish and staff worked together on that housing element as well. So very familiar with, with both documents, yeah.
Let me ask a specific question, then. What I'm hearing, or what I think I'm hearing, is there's no deadline for us to approve this. Am I right?
Our goal was to have it before the council this month. Correct.
That's a goal. I'm looking for a deadline.
There, there's no mandated, state deadline that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's going to be part of my discussion when I'm ready to do it.
I'm done if you want to go in.
Ready? Okay. I don't know how to say this and be polite, but you know, when you have a disposition up here, and we all have it, and we, we, I have one hell of a two weeks before the last council meeting, and to get a package that's four inches thick and ask me to approve it, even though I've seen it parts, and I've read it as much, and then it's drafted and you change it, and I read it again, we've been working on, you all have been working on it, and we've been seeing it for six years. I don't want a four-day approval time, okay? Especially when I pick it up and I got 48 to this council meeting, we're going to approve it. No, that, that does not make sense when we're talking about 17 years of the future. What we, what we approve will probably, should be, our, our vision for the next 17 years. So as one council member, I'm not ready to look at this at all as far as- So as one council member, I'm not ready to look at this at all, as far as actually approving it. I'm not criticizing your job, you done, you done good, but you had six years to do it. I'm not going to approve it in four days. I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to approve it in ten days. I appreciate, because Andy wasn't here and Carrie will not be here, that we extend it to the end of July, but I'm not sure I agree that that's enough time for the council person to really dig into every damn piece of paper and be able to say to the citizens, we did our job, okay? I'm not, I'm not ready to do that yet. So my proposal was I accept the end of July for more public input. I have no problem with that. But as far as the final approval, I'm looking more like October, because I want to be sure I read everything in here, and I can look anybody in the audience in the eye and say, "Okay, I've done my job, I've done due due, I did scan it, I didn't, could hardly carry it home, okay, I don't read it." So for the time being, we'll leave it at the end of July for the next appearance, but I'm still saying that there's a lot of reading to do, and not only reading, but comprehending what the heck we're asking to do. You know, you can read words, anybody can read words, but they got to, they got to register in your brain, there's no, what are you go, where are you going, where are you taking the city? And that's what this council is supposed to be doing, is taking the city in some direction. We got to be darn sure we know where we're going, and that we can justify it and live with it, because I hope to be around for the seventeen years. You never know. Roger says I will be, so I take that for a gospel. So anyway, that's my thing. I appreciate it, you've worked hard, the consultants, the staff has worked hard, our city staff always works hard, and senior management, they've done their job. Now it's up to the council to really, 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 you know, maybe the geek down at the end, as she calls herself, does read every single page. I remember back in the days when she said the packages are twice the size, that was a budget item, and she used to go page by page on the budget, I remember that.
I went through, like, whole packages of Post-its.
I know. I was there watching from the audience, I couldn't believe it. But anyways, that's my comments. I appreciate all the comments, I want to, I want to really have more. What I would like to say, if you have a letter or something you want to do, send it to the planning department, and let them send us advanced copies before we get it in the staff report.
Details.
Okay, so we can read it. I would appreciate that, you know. So my, I, I call concurrence for the end of July, but I think it should be longer, I would like to see it by October, and this council will still be here in October.
I agree with both Carrie and Ernie. I think to have this to vote on now is just not ready yet, so I do appreciate everyone's work on it, and I sit back and I see Lydia back there, and just to see how many of these things she puts together, it's just a tremendous amount of work, so thank you for that, but I do respect a little more time on it.
And I think, again, as I said at the beginning, this city council in January of last year said, it's not a one-and-done meeting. You know, we've made it very clear, for all the reasons we've already stated and everybody else has already stated, you know, this is, this is a governing document for many, many years still, and, you know, the Planning Commission, Park Commission, all the other commissions had one, two, and three bites at the apple, I think Planning had at least three. We've seen bits and pieces going on, but, you know, now we're at a point where they actually can sink their teeth into what would be the final, final-type draft, for lack of a better term, so I think leaving the opportunity for the public to participate is a promise we made, and you can hear all of this up here, and I'm sure Andy will be saying the same thing, we're honoring that promise. So I think the motion is to continue to the end of July, to the July twenty-fourth meeting.
July twenty-fourth.
And then at that point in time, depending on where we're at, if we got to continue a little bit longer, but I do have a procedural question. So if we were to, just hypothetically, because I think once you adopt a general plan, there's also a, I forgot the name of the period, maybe you remember what it is, Everett? So if we adopt a general, say we adopt a general plan, it, just hypothetically, July twenty-fourth, is it immediate, or is there a, or I'm mixing up with something else, is there like a ninety-day waiting period before it becomes effective?
It's not that seventy-two-hour rate of rescission in a real estate deal.
No, I know that. There are certainly statutory limits.
There are statutory requirements.
And I'll ask Mr. Wong to rattle those off the top of his head, because I'm sure he has them all memorized, but let me also just point out
Boy, Frank, I want to make sure that gets passed while I'm here.
Yeah, let me, let me also just point out, because I understand that the council is struggling with the volume of the document, and it certainly has been a while since you've seen it the last time, but it's important to recognize that as the 1988 general plan did, this new general plan will be a living and breathing document. It's a set of guidelines and policies to achieve the visions that are outlined within the general plan that were developed as a result of a considerable amount of community input, and it is not the tablet chiseled from stone coming down high off the mound, but rather kind of a reflection of where the community believes they are now, should events change in the future, even if that were just fifteen months into the future, and we recognize that there are conditions on the ground that require us to revisit certain portions of the general plan, that certainly can, and often does happen, and certainly has happened within our history here in the city, because our general plan from 1988, as you folks know, has been modified many, 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 many times, and at the same time, remained consistent with the vision that was adopted in that document, and that's why you see a number of those policy frameworks carrying over from the 1988 general plan, because the one thing we know for sure, history hasn't changed since then, it's trapped underground, right? So there are certain things that we know won't change, there are certain things that we know will, and that's why general plans are crafted to be living and breathing documents. So with that little bit, I'll ask Mr. Wong to talk about the statutory issues relative to the approval of the general plan. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Before you start, Steve, I just want to, when you were saying that, and I
Go to sleep.
No, but when you said that, the thing that came into my mind in my military career, and no disrespect to our engineer corps here, but it sounds like the engineers that build the curves and go up and break them up so they can have parking, you know, just do it right the first time.
Well, sure, and we strive to do so, and that's why we, you, your staff, and your various commissions have literally spent a lot of time on this, preparing a document for you of which we could be proud and put our name to, so that we could bring it to you, knowing that this to the best we can is baked. But Vice Mayor, you make a good point, and that is staff has now done their work, it is now time for the council to read, understand, and deliberate over the passage of the general plan, and we absolutely support whatever your wishes are relative to that. I'm only mentioning this just to remind everybody in the room and who might be watching this later, the general plans are living and breathing, and they're not designed to be permanently fixed for the next seventeen years like numbers that we've thrown around here before. That's simply not the way they work, they're not, not the way they work in statute, and that has not been our experience here.
And we've had to tell people, a plan is just that, it's a plan, okay? It's not concrete.
And I'm really looking forward to the July twenty-fourth meeting.
You're invited back.
There's going to be fire and brimstone under your chair for that one, so Mr. Wong.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Howell is entirely correct, so there is no incubation period. Long story short, as soon as the council adopts the general
Oh, it's already been incubated.
It's adopted, and it will be effective upon adoption, no waiting period.
I just want to double-check, because, you know, quite frankly, I don't want to rush it, but selfishly, I'd like to see it pass while I'm still sitting here. I don't want to wait another year.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think there's already
No, the motion's already out there.
A second on the table for July twenty-fourth, so, yes, the motion was by Councilmember Howell, second one was by Councilmember Gaylord. Any further discussions on this item or the motion? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon
Yes.
Gaylord
Yes.
Howell
Yes.
and Miklos.
Yes. Again, we encourage anybody that's watching, sitting here or otherwise, please, please, please get very specific on your comments, send them into planning, they'll get it forwarded to us, give them way in advance that you can think of, and if you got to do it more than once or twice, as things pop in your head, that's fine, but we'd like to have them sooner than later. Okay, with that, call the next item.
Your next item is convening the Joint City Council, Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority, Folsom South of Fifty Parking Authority, and the Folsom Rants Financing Authority Meeting.
Okay, so we'll call that meeting to order. If the clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Sheldon
Present.
Gaylord
Here.
Howell
Here.
Miklos
Present.
and Moran is absent.
Okay, I'll move consent.
Second.
Call a roll on that item, please.
Councilmember Sheldon
Yes.
Gaylord
Yes.
Howell
Yes.
and Miklos.
Yes. Next item?
Reconvene the city council meeting, Steve, please.
That's right, so go ahead and, I had to flip the page. So go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council, and I'll let you call that one.
Thank you. Your next item is city manager reports.
Been looking forward to this all evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening, everyone. Just two quick events that I want to point out to everyone, two that I have been looking forward to for a long time, because I've been involved in both, and staff has done a great deal of work on these, and the community, we are proud, and the community should be very proud of the barnyard experience that is going to have its grand opening Thursday, June twenty-eighth, and that is a new feature in the barn, it's a thirty-four hundred square foot hands-on learning center that is really designed to honor Folsom's ranching history and give a permanent home to our rescued farm and ranch animals that have long occupied the area in the ravine there, just on the backside of the Bobcat exhibit. So we're looking very much forward to that. That is, in the evening, I believe it starts at 6:00 PM on June twenty-eighth, that's a Thursday, as I recall. Looking very much forward
This Thursday.
This coming Thursday, yes, thank you very much. And then the next one is Thursday, July twelfth. The public is invited to a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the New Economy Family Park, and that is at the corner of East Notoma and Blue Ravine. Beautiful, beautiful facility, you've all probably been driving by it in its various stages of construction for the last year or so, and boy, does it look really nice, it's going to be another amazing amenity here in the city of Folsom, and just adds to our extraordinary inventory of parks, and I hope to see you all out at each of those events. Laura and I will be out there enjoying the festivities as well. So with that, good night, everyone.
Your next item, your last item, is council comments.
Carrie, we'll start your end.
Just want to remind everybody that the rodeo, well, in addition to the things that Everett's already announced, Saturday morning, there's a parade, the hometown parade, I think it's called, that will go down Coloma and Sutter on Saturday morning, that's at nine-thirty. Hope to see many of you there. Rodeo is this coming weekend into the beginning of next week, hope to see many of you at that. The usual warnings about please pay attention to speed limits and stop signs, and children who might run into the street, because all of those things apply to you, and if you're really, really lucky, or if I'm really lucky and you do break any of those rules, then Folsom's finest will be behind you when you do it. So just please drive carefully and be very, very careful of fireworks, and I'm going to go off in a different direction here for a minute, because I am not going to be here at the next council meeting, so this is going to be my public thank you to our fabulous city manager, and an early welcome to our incoming city manager, Elaine Anderson.
Also fabulous.
Also fabulous. Everett and I have been friends for a long time, it's been a very valuable experience for me, I've appreciated your guidance over these many years, and I wish you happiness and health and a fabulous retirement with your lovely wife.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being a friend.
Thank you.
Roger?
Thank you for being a friend. What is that?
It's a show you wouldn't remember.
Golden Girls.
Dang it.
And why that popped in my head, because I rarely watch it, I don't know.
Hey, I forgot what I was going to say.
Must be one of those ditties that just kind of
Now we know, now we
You know what, I'll close with that.
It was Spanky and our gang that got me.
It's probably still on Hulu.
Sorry. Good night.
Ernie?
I've got a few things. I know it's late, but I got to do it. And this weekend, I had the opportunity to do two Eagle Scout courts, a young man by name Alexander, they call him Alex West, a great, they're all great, but these kids getting better. Troop Two Thirty-Seven, which I wasn't familiar with too much, because I didn't recognize a lot, and it dawned on me, that's Andy Moran's troop, and he locks it up, we never get a chance, but he's out of town, so I got a chance. And another one I attended up at the Vista was Rashad Burma, another high school grad, great kid. By the way, Alex is going into the Army, which is a good choice, and Rashad is going into the, going to the University of Washington, I said Wisconsin, I keep saying it, that's where I'm from. Troop One Thirty-Four, great kids, both of them outstanding, Alex had thirty-six merit badges, he's only twenty-one to hit the requirement, I tell you how super this guy is. Prior to that, I got the opportunity to go attend the American Bangladesh Association get-together event, it was great. It is very colorful, because the ladies all dressed in all their natural native dressing, very pretty. The people treated me very nice, a very educated group of people, they're all engineers and doctors and you name it. And they, I loved it.
Engineers.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I got a count-traveling numbers, you better be careful. But they also let the kids just go wild and be kids, I love that, you know, they just were all over the joint, and there's a lot of kids, and that's good. They came from Elk Grove and Citrus Heights and a few areas, and I tried to encourage them to move to Folsom because it's a better place, I don't want to take that up. Besides that, I went to the COPS awards night afternoon with most of the people here, and that was well done, very, very neat, and well-deserving what our COPS do. Got another training, I got a lot of opportunities in two weeks to just not be home, you know? And I went to the second meeting on the Area Forty, because I didn't quite understand the first meeting, it was pretty technical, and I got to hear a little bit of the longer input from the citizens of town that were concerned, and I'm here to tell you right now, I'm very concerned with Area Forty. It's occurrence enough to city managers, I'd like to put on record and follow it up, that if we get that alternate community park that they're giving us, consider that the primary city park, community park, and put that Area Forty park as the alternate, if they can get it fixed, and you all read the article in the paper that came out shortly, and they're talking about not starting the 2022, come on, guys. Okay, we didn't hear that at this council meeting, but what we, well, what we heard at this meeting was ten to ten, ten years or a hundred years is what he said. So I think we want to go on record right away in saying that that park site is not Area Forty, it's whatever that alternate is, and I'd like to follow up on that. And one final thing to say is fireworks is coming two days from now, and you just saw the fires up north of us, please be very, very careful, I wish, there's twelve booths in town, we're selling them, the kids buying them, and we've been very fortunate, our party department hasn't been too busy in the past, and I don't want them to be, so just be careful, go ahead and buy, because the kids want to buy, and I know some big kids that want to buy, but just be very careful.
Okay. And one clarification on that, that Area Forty thing, is as we said in the last council meeting, we are not going to let anybody go into any area in our plan area south of Fifty that can jeopardize their health, so I want to make that clear, and number two, as it was expressed at that same meeting, there is no pressure on the city council to push that development, backup, to push that cleanup to be done sooner or later, and as for a matter of record, that superfund site was designated over twenty years ago, so this is something that just didn't happen, it's been identified for over twenty years, and they're very methodically cleaning it up, and that's why they shared with us early on, the groundwater extraction tertiary plants are the biggest success story of what's going on over there, because that water's actually cleaner than what comes down from the Sierra. So I agree with the, with the Vice Mayor, in fact, he was very active when Jeff and I had the two-by-two, and we said to the Park and Rec Commission, he let it be known very succinctly, and we agreed, we're going to grab our, our alternate site sooner and later, because that could be our primary site, and it's still going to be within our sites as far as vision, that if they're not meeting the timeframes when we're ready, not the developer, when we, the city, are ready for being down there, that's when the decision will be made where it goes, but I will tell you, and I'm sure I'll be long gone, well, I know I will be, I don't think any city council would ever put any, any ever residents over an area that is not health to them, to their animals, their guests, period. So I think the record stands pretty strong, we've never done that and never will do that, so I appreciate you guys following up with that while after I'm gone. So to the manager, your comment, I'll let you get away with that one. We'll get to another one sooner than later.
The last one?
No, he's got one more. No, we're chaining him to his chair one more time. And for everybody else out there, as the Vice Mayor said, And for everybody else out there, as the Vice Mayor said, have fun with your fireworks, it's, it's mixed emotions for me as a, as a paramedic fireman, I was never a fan of fireworks, because I went on too many kids where they blew themselves up, either fingers or worse. Obviously, as the fire guys know, I mean, the, the amount of calls that you get, and God forbid, we don't have any, you know, brush fires or turn to structure fires and stuff like that, but from the American spirit, I've, over the years, supported the fireworks draw, I still support the fireworks draw, I support the cause of what we're doing with the fireworks booths, I'm sure I'll find Ernie whatever one he's in, because I always buy from his booth, just because Ernie's still in it, that in itself is an institution in this town.
About last year.
He, well, he does last longer than a Piccolo Pete, so you got to give him his respect, so I'll keep buying. Anyway, so please be careful with those, but certainly enjoy them, and so that's really what I'm going to say this evening, but, oh, I did have one last thing I did want to say, I have to con, just commend everybody this evening on all sides, in my, one of my mantras, if you will, is I like the fact that it was the truth, everything we spoke of, it was facts, it was respect, and it was transparent, so thank you to everybody that was here, that's watching, that participated, I think you made the city very proud. So with that, again, I'll adjourn the meeting, as I said earlier, in the name of Allison Watkins, a jewel for this community of Folsom, and certainly will miss her, meeting adjourned at 10:04.
I got to call David.